Everyone got very quiet. All right, welcome, everyone. Today is Tuesday, December 5th, 2023. This is the Salinas City Council meeting, and this meeting is available in Spanish for members of the public in attendance and on Zoom. Translation devices can be obtained in the foyer. City Clerk?
Buenas tardes. Esta reunión está disponible en español para los miembros del público y en Zoom. Las unidades de traducción se pueden obtener en entrada de la rotunda.
Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilmember Barrera, would you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call.
Councilmember Barrera?
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez? Councilmember McShane?
Here.
Councilmember Osoria?
Here.
Councilmember Rocha?
Here.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Here.
Mayor Craig?
Here. Excellent, thank you. We will go on. For first two items of business, City of Champions, we'll start off with Councilmember Barrera, who'd like to honor Monterey for Maui.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor and fellow colleagues. You know, in the summer months of 2023, we had heard a serious situation have been happening in Hawaii in a community named Lahaina, Maui. Over 2,700 homes were lost. Hundreds, maybe thousands of families lost their home. A lot of people even now in shelters. Serious devastation that Hawaii had never, ever experienced. And the connection that this community in Maui has in common, there's friends and relatives here in the great city of Salinas. And during Veterans Day, when we were having our Veterans Parade honoring our soldiers, our men and women that have served this great country, and throughout the country during Veterans Day, there was an awesome festival of love being held at Northminster Church on Alvin Drive that same day. Over 1,000 people showed to participate. And this was to let Lahaina community in Maui know that they're loved and they have people that are concerned about them and want to help. So there was a lot of people that came together here in the city of Salinas, called Monterey for Maui. And a beautiful festival happened that day. And we want to acknowledge, we wanted to say thank you, a formal thank you to the people that made that happen today. And Madam Mayor, that was three months ago that this had happened. But we want to acknowledge the love that the city of Salinas has for this community as well. So, Madam Mayor, you have the...
I do. I have the plaques and the certificates of recognition. And if you don't mind, what I think we'll do, we have one more person to recognize. So we'll have you come up and we'll have a separate photo opportunity for you. But I do want to take a moment to acknowledge Charlene Huihui.
Yes, so they can step forward.
Yes, of course. Come, and if you're here in present, just to come forward so that we can get a couple of comments. Junia Lopez and Manley Bush. Right here. If you'd like to say a few words, we'd love to hear how the event went at the podium right here.
Thank you.
Yes, please, yeah.
First of all, I want to say that it wasn't just the three of us. It was our committee, and some of them are here, and I'd like them to come up also.
Of course. Yeah, come on up.
Timmy, color cuckooing and her daughter Pua. Cynthia Bush. There supposed to be more, but I guess they're running late. And not just us. There was about 13 of us on this committee, and our spouses had to put up with us for the past three months as well. But it was the community. It was the ag companies. It was the small businesses that all donated to us. We raised that day over $41,000, and we're still getting money. And our expenses were kept to a minimum of about $5,000 because of all the donations we made. And I just want to say I'm so proud to be a part of the city of Salinas, the county of Monterey. And our family is all from Maui. My mother was born and raised there. Uncle Manley and Junior, we all have family there or had family there. And I just want to thank all of the city of Salinas and Monterey County for just giving a little, just cuckooing. And, you know, everybody... I'm just overwhelmed with all the sponsors we had and all the money that came in. And it's still coming. And I just met with Robert Mina at Capital Bank, and he said, "Money is still coming in." So I'm hoping we hit $50,000 before the end of the year.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Manley Bush. I'd like to thank the, of course, the support that I also received by representatives that we had, Tony Barrera, that came and speak on behalf, and particularly those that supported our community here, which are Salinas' family here. So we met people that were total strangers. We were total strangers, but we came together with one goal in mind is to help people that are in need at this time. Thank you.
My name is Junia Lopez, and I want to give much mahalos to her for inviting us to this day. It was a pleasure working with committees and Chair Charlene. She's the one that had the dream, and we fulfilled it and helped her as best we could fulfill her dream. And my father-in-law, Manley, you know, and I have family in Hawaii, so it touches a special part of my heart as well. So I'm glad that everything turned out well. And like Charlene said, there's more coming in, and our goal is, I think, is still going. So we're happy that it all happened. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. And if you want to go ahead and have a seat, we'll call you up in a few moments for a photo, if that's okay. All right, we'll go on to our next city of champion, or, excuse me, commendation. We have Jefferson Davis, our Traffic and Transportation Commissioner and Councilmember McShane to give the certificate.
Yeah, just so delighted that Jeff could be with us, with his family. And I would invite Jeff to the podium and his entire family to come on up, because it's a family affair. I served on the Traffic and Transportation Commission. I follow these commissions, these boards that serve the city. There's been no more committed leader than Jeff. Delighted crosswalk in front of Salinas High School, thanks to you. By my count, at least 200 potholes, not to mention painted curbs and numerous traffic calming projects across the city that you personally inspected, assisted people to bring their idea for traffic calming to the city. The hours, the subcommittees of the commission, your time as chair. Our city just wants to say thank you to you and your family for your leadership. And I know this is the tip of the iceberg, because you're involved in your faith, your kids' school, and a number of other charitable causes in the community. You set a great example. And we just want to say thank you and invite you to say anything you would like, given that you've spent years on this commission. So, Jeff?
Well, I would just like to thank you for the appointment. It was an amazing experience. I got to vice chair. I got to chair. I got to work on, like you said, subcommittees. My family, thank you for putting up with me and all the hours that I spent away. They're growing, and they require a little more attention. So I think it's my time to step down and let another person fill the void.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you all.
Thank you. We'll get a photo in just a second.
Yeah, actually, we'll start with them and then, because we have two for today. So Jeff, if you want to come right to the edge and Council, if we can get behind them.
Okay.
Okay, ready? One, one, two. Hold on, one more, one more. Okay. Excellent.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Ready? One, two. All right, ready? One, two.
Ohana!
Ohana!
Okay. All right. And now we will move on to public comment. If you wish to make a general public comment or comment on a specific agenda item, you're encouraged to attend the city council meeting in person or attend the Zoom webinar and use the raise hand icon. Email public comments received have been distributed to the mayor, the council, the city clerk, and will be entered into the permanent record. Public comments generally are limited to two minutes per speaker. I may further limit the time for public comments depending on the agenda schedule. So we are now open for public comment for items not on today's agenda. You may approach the podium.
Hi, welcome.
My name is Leo Jenkins. I live in Creekbridge at 1727 Summit Way. I noticed Jeff Davis. Is he from the south? Wasn't he the president of the Confederacy? At any rate, he did help me out. I had a problem with the traffic light at Beacon Hill and Constitution, and the next day he solved it, which was just amazing. So moving smartly on, I have left each of you a little note saying loud noises, which maybe you could read at your leisure. And to make a long story short, because I only have two minutes, maybe 130 seconds left, I have a problem with very loud parties going on in a big tent set up behind my house in the neighbor's yard with a live band. And this happens every two or three weeks. It's been going on for a year. They last until well after midnight, and they're right behind my bedroom. I also have a neighbor who just told me he had a serious heart problem. He has to wear a defibrillator 24 hours a day, and he cannot be subject to stress. And he needs lots of sleep, and he cannot do that because of the loud party going on every other week behind our houses. Now, that's the condition. And the problem is, I've talked to the police. This is back in, I think, April of last year. They came and told him to quiet down and knock the party off. But it continued going. So I went and I talked to him, and I gave him a copy of the code. And he said he would quiet it down, but he never did. I talked to his wife at another, after another party. She told me, "Didn't you used to have fun when you were young?" And I, I'm not young, but when I was young, I didn't disturb my neighbors. So the problem is the police do not do anything. They're not allowed to make... I went down to make a complaint yesterday at the police department in accordance with the instructions on the police in your website. But they said they do not take complaints for noise. They said they would... Is that my time up?
That's your time.
Oh.
If you'd like, you can submit additional comments by email, and I think the city clerk can give you that email for the whole council.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll make quick, fourth thing.
Actually, no. Actually, I have to be fair to everyone. So respectfully, we need to keep the meeting moving and give everyone equal time. Thank you.
Nobody can yield their time, can they? Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hi, I'm Maureen Ruck, and I'm Chair of the old Main Street Foundation. And that would be the foundation that's in charge of the Salinas Valley Food and Wine. Salinas Valley Food and Wine here is here tonight to present a check to Dorothy's Place from the Food and Wine Festival.
That's her two minutes. I'll go for my two minutes. Joel Panzer. I was this year's Chair of the Salinas Valley Food and Wine Festival. Festival has been in place for 11 years. We've sold out for the last three years. We put thousands of dollars back into the local economy. We support local businesses. There's a number of volunteer organizations that benefit. And tonight Dorothy's Place is one of them. Their mission statement says it all. "With love, respect, and compassion, Dorothy's Place provides essential services and transitional support to people experiencing..." I don't know, I get emotional. "...experiencing the injustice of homelessness and extreme poverty." And I would like to remind everybody watching, the Community Foundation of the Monterey Peninsula has a Monterey County Gives program. This check is going to them to maximize what we could do for Dorothy's Place. So.
Thank you. Jill Allen with Dorothy's Place. Thank you for allowing us to speak in public comment. I just want to say how grateful we are to Salinas Valley Wine and Food. I think that they made a perfect pairing by celebrating our local bounty here with the culinary expertise of local people and the wine-making expertise of other locals to benefit a local cause that's very dear to many people's hearts. And that is getting people out of homelessness, especially chronic homelessness, and into supported housing so that they can be healthier for themselves, they can support their families. And we can support the taxpayers by rerouting money that is being wasted on cleanups and other things that are taking us away from the real problem, which is housing. So my gratitude to all of you for supporting Salinas Valley Food and Wine. And we are so grateful, so, so very grateful for your support and the support of MC Gives. Those of you listening, if you haven't made a contribution yet, we're on MC Gives. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you.
It's for $5,000.
Excellent. Great job. All right. I don't normally allow clapping for our meetings, but that certainly was well warranted, and we can appreciate good, kind-hearted people serving the community. So thank you. Hi, welcome.
Sorry, I started clapping and just had to.
No, that's all right.
Hi, my name is April Flint. I live at 426 California Street, and I want to talk about a traffic issue. And it was so cool to see Jeff, was it? Who just stepped down from that commission? All right, well, we need him or whoever's going to step into his place. I live on California between John and San Luis. And the intersection of San Luis and California is extremely dangerous. My son came running home yesterday from his bus stop. That's my little boy right there. And he told me, "There was an accident again, Mom." And I ran down there, and I got pictures. And I actually helped one of the victims get pictures of the entire situation. Got video. And we need a four-way stop there. And no offense to Salinas PD, but they fly through there like they're qualifying for, you know, they're qualifying for a race. I mean, understand it. They're in a time and need. I understand that. California should not be a thoroughfare like that, especially because there's a light at John, and there's not a light at Alisal. And that is a scary intersection, too, but that's a whole other ballgame. I'm worried about San Luis, because there's a children's center on Front Street. And there's the school bus stop for the Salinas Elementary School District is right out in front of that. And the middle schoolers, the high schoolers, everybody walks through that area. And my son came running home from the bus stop to tell me, "Mom, there was a school bus act." Or, "There was a traffic accident. Please come help." And he was really concerned that somebody got hurt. And it is not the first time that we've seen that. And not too long ago, I sent all of my information to Steve. I've got video, pictures. The last accident that I was there at. And he bikes around the neighborhood, and he said he was almost hit yesterday trying to get, and he and all his friends.
Thank you.
I'm so sorry.
No, that's okay. You did a great job. And thank you for bringing your son to see some civic work.
Of course.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hello. All right. My name is Amy Berkman, and I'm a local artist born here in Salinas Valley, born and raised. For over 10 years, I've been doing art with the purpose of helping others, which includes painting educational and inspirational murals and raising money for charities through live art performances. I did a live art demonstration you may have seen on your way in to show a glimpse of what I do, and I'm excited to share why I'm here. I've been selected as the artist partner with YOSEL on a year-long art project funded by the California Arts Council. The focus of this project is to create outreach and engagement initiatives to advance social justice. And to do this, my vision is to highlight the stories of some of these students and how a program like YOSEL's can really make a positive impact in our youth. My goal is to create eye-catching, vibrant art installations of YOSEL students around the city, which will include QR codes that leads the public to a documentary that I'll be filming. Separately, I have plans to involve the public, including up-and-coming artists in Salinas to help design and paint a large interactive mural. We think this is a great way to bring the community together, engage others in social justice initiatives, and create opportunities for our youth. This project is not about me as an artist. It's focused specifically on elevating their stories and how creating opportunities ultimately makes our community a stronger, more beautiful place to live. My own personal story and success as an artist comes from a local teacher who opened up opportunities for top art students that we wouldn't have had otherwise. His belief in us had such a profound impact in our lives, and I want to do the same for kids who could benefit from programs like this. I'm currently working on locations and approval from business owners and here to build excitement and to get support for what's to come. My plan is to get on a future agenda and share in more detail about this project. Finally, YOSEL is having their winter concert tomorrow at 7:00 PM. I'll be performing another live art piece. Exactly. And another art piece to share about the project. So please join us tomorrow at 7:00.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, welcome.
Hi. This is Mary Ann Warden. How many of you people up there remember that Rosalie Carter was in Salinas at the Alisal Healthy Start to dedicate that? I listened to city council meeting the night before last. I didn't hear any comment. I haven't heard, seen anything in the newspapers. And as far as I know, nothing's been said at the Alisal School District office. You know, that was a big occasion for us to have her dedicate that building to us. At the same time, we had the Attorney General from California there at the same time. He happened to be just a lawyer when I was on the grand jury federal court up in San Francisco. And we used to bring snacks to him, so I brought my cookies to them. But it should have been some acknowledgement that she had came to Salinas. And I forgot the name of the lady, but I do have pictures of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers, for this moment to comment. My name's Alyssa Rendon. I'm here with Sandy Huerta, and we're from C Monterey. Just a brief update on what we've been doing these few months. Since our last city council meeting, I heard you guys about, you know, making sure we showcase more of Salinas. And we've really hit the pavement, literally, door-to-door knocking. We've partnered with Supa and MCBC, visited 41 businesses. And Alisal had appointments with different Kern Street hotel properties. And we're really making that effort to showcase the greater Salinas area. And I want to share my time with my colleague Sandy Huerta to talk about a new PR initiative.
Yeah, good afternoon, everybody. My name is Sandy Huerta. I am the Communications Specialist at C Monaray. I'm a proud Salinas native. Go Cowboys. And also, I'm proud to come from an Hispanic family, which is why I'm so excited to share with you all very briefly about our new initiative, which is Encuentra tu Monterrey. And that is to further our connection with the La Comunidad Hispanoablante en los Estados Unidos, Mexico, y Latinoamerica. So while I would like to go further into what we were doing with this program, I'll just say that we are, again, hitting the ground running. And I had the opportunity to go to Mexico City with Visit California to meet with top editors of Spanish-speaking media to share, you know, the good word of Monterey County. So I look forward to coming back with some results. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else in the rotunda for public comment on items not on today's agenda? Okay, we'll go to Zoom. Does any member of the public on Zoom wish to comment on items not on today's agenda? If so, please use the raise hand function. All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public comment. We'll go to our first item of business, sorry, second item of business, our administrative report, 23-691, the broadband network development update. And we have Michael Gomez, our Economic Development Analyst, to give the report. Welcome. Sounds like it needs to be turned on. There we go.
Good afternoon, Mayor Kimley Craig, council members, Mr. Pia, Mr. Callahan, of course, our city clerk, and members of the public, and Assistant City Clerk. My name's Michael Gomez, Economic Development Analyst with the City of Salinas. I'm going to be giving a brief update on the broadband network development update in partnership here with our consultant, Kimley Horn, Joe Arroyo, and Chang Albert. So our council, previous council as well, has identified the development of a broadband network designed to be a crucial component here within the city of Salinas to benefit our business owners as well as our residents. Some of those benefits would include job research, recruitment, education, social connectivity, telehealth resources. And one of the main constraints was that a lot of, or not constraints, but a lot of our residents lack access to broadband services, resources, at an affordable rate. So what did not come up? Sorry. Oh, there it is. So in order for us to be able to provide that, to provide that access, we need to provide the physical infrastructure, as well as provide digital literacy, and provide it at an affordable cost. So some items that the city has done is we released a request for proposal to obtain a private investor to develop a fiber, a fiber network, an open access fiber network that our residents can obtain services from. So in March of 2021, the City of Salinas released an RFP. In June of 2021, we entered into an exclusive negotiating rights agreement with Underline LLC, which was one of our consultants, or one of our partners, one of the individuals that submitted a proposal. We did receive five, but of course, Underline scored the highest. In December of 2021, we signed a license agreement for them to construct and operate a fiber design network, or the actual infrastructure of it. In May of 2022, we also signed another agreement for a master service agreement where the city may potentially be a, one of their, it will allow us to get service from Underline. In January of 2023, the City of Salinas approved a new microtrenching standard plan to allow Underline to do microtrenching within the City of Salinas. This was codified within our municipal code since it was something new that was done within the City of Salinas. Currently, we still have ongoing discussions with Underline figuring out and, you know, refining the last bit of information that we need to actually start the groundwork for this infrastructure. And with that, we also, Underline is proposing to design the entire broadband network. It's going to be primarily focused in the, begin in the east side of Salinas. And a lot of our residents will have a choice of internet service providers, which are known as ISPs, where they can select. So if a customer isn't happy with one particular internet service provider, they can jump on to the next service provider by a simple click of a button, logging into their online portal. Underline also proposes a minimum speed of 500 to 500 megabytes per second. Currently, some, there are other companies offering a minimum of 50 memory bytes per second. And of course, it goes up as those memory bytes per second go up, so does the price. Underline is proposing the 500 to 500 at a cost of $55. Sorry, at a cost of $49, and speeds are 500 to 500, and they can increase up to 1 gigabyte or up to 10 gigabytes of speed. They are also responsible for providing the community engagement, and through that, they will do digital outreach, pop-up events, press, radio billboards, and reaching out to local champions, local nonprofits that can get the message across that this service will be available, and as well as any other credits that they can apply for through the Affordable Connectivity Program with the state, with the Federal Communications Commission. So prior to that slide, we've also been in communication with the County of Monterey, as they also have their strategic broadband plan. And with that, we are making sure that we're not duplicating any work. Any work that we're going to be doing here within the City of Salinas is not duplicated. That way, we are making sure that the funds that we have acquired are being, or the funds that Underline will be putting down are not being repeatedly used with the Monterey County funds. And I'd like to introduce Joe Arroyo, who will be talking with regards to our Local Agency Technical Assistance Grant that the City of Salinas was awarded in February 2021, and we signed an agreement with Kimley Horn in April 4 of 2023 to develop our ALCAL broadband plan, as well as our broadband plan with the, sorry, our East ALCAL, East Broadband Fiber Design Network and our broadband master plan for the City of Salinas as a whole.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Joe Arroyo. I'm a project engineer with Kimley Horn, so I'd like to talk a little bit about what we're partnering with the city on, which is the Salinas Broadband Master Plan. As Michael discussed, we are partnering with the city to improve broadband access in the City of Salinas. The city received $470,000 in Local Agency Technical Assistance, or LATA, grants. I'd like to be upfront and say that this grant is to be used only for the planning of a future broadband network. It is not to be used for construction. And so the goal was to bridge the divide. We wanted to bring low-cost, high-speed internet for unserved and underserved communities, with the focus area being ALCAL, Chinatown, and downtown. So the broadband master plan includes a couple of pieces that are highlighted up here: data collection, conceptual design, a citywide broadband network and implementation plan, and then the final master plan. The data collection included visiting existing city facilities, traffic signals, and buildings. We really just wanted to get a layup of land and figure out how we could leverage the existing buildings to potentially install new equipment in there. The conceptual design, as part of our project, we are set to have a conceptual design for broadband in the entire city. I'll talk a little bit about ALCAL neighborhood here in a second. Our implementation plan will be focused on providing information related to operations and maintenance of potential broadband networks in the future, also a governance model alternative wherein the city could potentially own this broadband network, or, as Michael mentioned, we're working directly with Underline. And so Underline would be taking care of the broadband network. We also want to bring up potential funding opportunities. As we know, building out broadband and fiber is very expensive, so we want to provide options for the city to build out this network and any potential partnership opportunities that could be leveraged to build out this network. All of this information will be wrapped up in the broadband master plan, for which we will have a draft and final document. Focusing now on the ALCAL neighborhood, we are actually under contract with the city to do design documents for the ALCAL neighborhood. And so what you see here in this photo is some of the buildings that we visited within the ALCAL neighborhood. The police complex is kind of what we're using as our main point of connection to our internet node there. And so what we did in order to complete and to work on this portion of the project was a field review of the facilities in the ALCAL neighborhood. Listed are some of the facilities we visited, which include the breadbox, Recreation Center, the Salinas Fire Department Station, the Firehouse Recreation Center, and two facilities at the airport, the Terminal Building, and the Administrative Office. And so the goal there was to, again, figure out what exactly we could do with these buildings, whether we needed to upgrade any existing space in the building, or provide some cooling devices for the broadband equipment. And we also did a needs assessment summary. My colleague Albert presented and got information from the city. We put out a survey to get an idea of what the city would like to use broadband, the broadband network for outside of what the residents are looking to do. And we're also working on including a public Wi-Fi component to the ALCAL neighborhood, which we haven't quite yet worked on because we've been working on the design documents. So as far as the broadband master plan and ALCAL design, this is kind of the schedule that we have going forward. Like we mentioned, the data collection and field investigation has been completed. Today, actually, we submitted the draft construction documents, which we hope that Underline will take through the partnership with the city and be able to build out. We will be waiting for comments from Underline and from the city and hope to finalize those in January 2024. Following the completion of the draft documents, or the permit documents, we are going to be completing a gap analysis and preliminary project list to figure out how we can put out other broadband projects to the rest of the city and how to prioritize those. The implementation plan will tell us how we can build those, the timeline, and how we can fund those. And everything will be summarized for folks to see in the broadband master plan, which we hope to have completed in late May 2024. And any questions?
All right. With that, thank you for the presentation. And I will start to my right with councilmember questions. Councilmember Osornio?
Mayor, I'm going to reserve for comment. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Barrera, questions?
Mr. Arroyo, I know you talked a lot about the ALCAL neighborhood. I know the last time we spoke about this, the broadband was going to go all the way to the police station. What, if there's people that are listening to us and the people in the audience, what is the benefit that these families, these people that use the service? How do you see that happening? And you know what? Everything looks great at the beginning, colored pictures, brochures. But at the end of the day, I know there's, there's no liability to the city your report says, but what happens with the families? Where do they see that it's a benefit, that it's an investment, that it's something that they, even though it's needed, what's the benefit for them?
So, and I'll let Michael chime in with any response you may have here as well. But as he mentioned, there are two categories that we're focusing on with this broadband master plan, is the unserved and underserved communities. So currently, community members have access to internet, but it may not be meeting state or national standards of speed and reliability. And as, you know, we're all here, a little bit post-COVID, I would say. And so we realized how important it is to have internet access. And what we want to do is provide equitable internet access that's reliable to all residents. And that's why we're really focusing on the ALCAL area right now specifically, because that's one of the most unserved or underserved areas, and underserved areas in the city. So the benefit will be reliable internet access.
Thank you, Mr. Arroyo. Now to the Economic Development Analyst, Mr. Gomez.
Yeah, so, follow-up questioner. Yes, another benefit would be that this master plan will allow, will give us, they're also searching for other grant opportunities, which one of them is potentially the city being able to acquire devices, that we can do pop-up workshops and provide those devices. So getting some of those residents out, so enticing them, hey, we have a device. If you sign up for the program at a low cost. So there are various benefits, as well as the city will have that design, say, for some reason, Underline doesn't pull through. We have that design network that Kimley Horn already prepared and is ready to shovel ready. So they are going to be providing us with those permits, or the plan itself, that someone can just come in, pull permits, and move forward.
And Mr. Gomez, to your point, even though we know it's going to be a low cost, what's happening in the ALCAL right now, as you call it underserved, we have a lot of street vendors. They come in the name of PG&E, they come solar. Everybody's trying to sell a lot of things, and they come in the name of corporations. And then when we get the phone calls, we find out whoever is selling door-to-door is not really part of that company. How are we going to, and it's a rich community. You know, when I hear the word underserved, it's, I don't know, I have mixed feelings with that, but because the ALCAL is a rich neighborhood. But to my point, how do we protect, once we get up and running with this service? Because everybody's going to want it. Because you're saying it's low cost, it'll probably help senior citizens. How do we protect them from these individuals that are going to be going door-to-door in the name of the City of Salinas?
So we're not going to have individuals that are directly from the City of Salinas. Underline is responsible for doing their own outreach. I think on our end, we can probably provide support, giving them the, you know, the champions of local communities, who they can reach out to. But in reality, I don't think that we're going to, Alyssa, correct me if I'm wrong, we're not responsible for providing any direct outreach. We're going to provide them the resources to do that outreach, but we can definitely bring that up to them and then see how we can figure that out. So we don't get, you know, people that aren't supposed to be going, soliciting other folks, because I think in my experience, I've encountered folks that say they're with one person, and they're not. You sign up, and you're getting a fee in your bill. So we understand where you're coming from.
Thank you.
Can I add one more thing? Sorry. I had a similar issue with underserved and unserved. In this case, it refers to access to internet and speeds related to what the federal standards are. So that's, yeah.
Thank you.
Councilmember Sandoval, questions? Councilmember Rocha, questions?
Yeah, can someone, I'm not sure who I would direct this question to, but in your timeline, it speaks to the implementation plan being in late February of 2024, but the final broadband master plan being in late May of 2024. What was the thought process behind doing the implementation plan before the adoption of the master plan?
Well, the implementation plan is focused a lot on available funding sources, and there are actually a lot of available funding sources related to broadband use right now. So we really actually have been working on that portion of the project already, just to make sure that we are correctly identifying and potentially applying for some of these grants or preparing to do so. The broadband master plan itself is really just a summary of all the work that we've done.
And from the implementation plan, what is the, if you have one, and it probably would come to fruition through the implementation plan, but do you have an idea of when the final implementation date is?
That one is a little difficult, because it would be based on when available funding exists. Underline is actually supposed to be building out a network to the entire city. And so if we're, like Michael mentioned, we're putting together at least, through our scope, the design plans for the ALCAL neighborhood. But Underline, that timeline is mostly based on Underline or available funding sources that we may find.
Thank you. And do you have any idea of what initial funding streams exist for these kind of projects?
Yes, there have been a lot of discussions, specifically around underserved and underserved communities, and how to provide broadband access for them. There's a lot of funding allocated out there. I think the challenging part with this available funding is how you apply it. And so a lot of times, they like agencies to partner with specific ISP providers, which makes it a little challenging, because the city has to kind of commit to being an active participant in the way that the network is managed, which a lot of times take a lot of city staff. And so it's a little bit complex there.
Thank you.
My name is Albert Chang. I'm the project manager for the project. I just want to speak to your question, councilmember, councilman. So there are two main funding streams that the city should be looking at. The first is the CASF grant, California Advanced Services Fund. The California CPUC charges every phone and cell phone a certain fee that goes into a fund to help improve service to underserved and unserved neighborhoods. So that's one that they have applications twice a year. That's something we're definitely going to target. The other one is the federal government, the IIJA, the Infrastructure Investment Jobs Act includes, you've probably heard of it, BEAD, Broadband Equity Access and Deployment. There's $2 billion allocated for California. It's very broad. It can do stuff for infrastructure as well as programs. That's also another thing we want to look at for implementation. But there may be other funds from grants or from private sources that will be included.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And as part of the master plan, I support the plan to make the ALCAL an area of focus. I would also ask, is there any other communities in the city that are being considered for particular investment? I'm thinking of the Santa Rita community in particular, which is another underserved community in our city. Does the master plan take into consideration those dynamics throughout the entire city?
The master plan will include the whole city. And the focus was on those three things from the grant application because of certain state data for those that we thought would score higher. But we do want to have a plan for the whole city.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And those are all my questions.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember McShane, questions?
Yeah, make no qualms about it, high-speed internet is as important as electricity and water to our residents. What is taking so long for Underline to break ground? It's been over two and a half years. Recent correspondence with their representatives, I think I have here, is quote-unquote frustrated and concerned. So, you know, it's great to have master plans and lots of fancy reports. We've got underserved communities that are, you know, dealing with Jurassic speeds.
Yeah, no, that's, I think that's definitely something that we've been looking out for as well. When we hired Kimley Horn to do that, there was some concerns whether if, that the city was moving forward to do their own plan. But we decided to move forward with Underline and make that a collaboration, being that Underline's going to provide us, they have already provided us today their draft for the ALCAL area. Once that's finalized, it'll be pretty much ready for Underline to pull permits. So I think currently, we're looking at, I can't, you know, say a specific date, but January is when we're shooting for us to have some plans ready for Underline to submit to the City of Salinas for approval. So we hope that that process is being sped up with that.
Refresh my memory, do we have a microtrenching ordinance?
That was, yes. That was recently adopted in, I think, January of 2023.
Correct.
So that was one of the holdups, that we didn't have that policy in place. And once we had it in place, then there were some other nuances that Underline had questions about it, because microtrenching, or they were also looking at boring, they're looking at what the cost would be to pull permits. So there's ongoing discussions regarding that.
So that was the other shoe that dropped, Michael. I think, from what I heard, the fees associated with microtrenching were extraordinary, like way beyond any other jurisdiction. And they said, okay, you get that figured out, we're going to go do work in Hollister and Walnut Creek while you figure out your fee situation. I mean, it was extraordinary.
Yeah, so that was one topic that they were concerned about. They did compare other rates, and they did mention that ours were pretty high. They didn't exactly say that they're not going to, you know, move forward with the microtrenching. I think it's just more of the details in repairing the roads that I think we were able to address that kind of offset those costs for them.
Yeah, it's a proven technology, and I hope we can hit the gas on that. How does our master plan tie into the Monterey County regional broadband strategy? I mean, is there connectivity there? Coffee, dialogue?
So there is dialogue. We were part of their strategic plan. So we provided the information that we have, we provided our areas of concern. That way, no duplicate work is done. So we are collaborating, we are having open discussions with them, and our consultants have also viewed that plan and putting that into consideration on our master plan.
And maybe one of my last questions here, what are the chances that ISPs and folks that have the data aren't talking? Like, that's the other concern that was flagged in recent correspondence, that there's just, there's this lack of transparency, you know, where we don't have to talk. You know, are you encountering that pushback?
No. So I haven't heard anything on that aspect. From what I know is that Underline is just going to have a, I'm assuming, an application process for a lot of ISPs to be able to join their network. And then it's just dependent on the resident. If they think that ISP's not, you know, up to par, then they can switch with the click of a button.
Thank you. That's all, Mayor. That's all I have.
Thank you. I'll reserve for comment. We'll go out to the public. Does any member of the public wish to comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, I'll go to Zoom. Does any, oh, I just wondered, actually, if you can come to the microphone to make sure that we have you on record. Thank you.
Hi, I just wanted, my name is Jessica. I'm a student here at Hertnell, and I wanted to comment and I just kind of be supportive of their project. I feel like you guys may be a little skeptical, but as a, I feel like if they also market it not only towards seniors and towards underprivileged or underserved folks in ALCAL, I mean, they're everywhere in Salinas, but also towards students like us who need it. Sometimes we have to go to cafes and noisy areas. Sometimes we have to go to libraries when they're closed on Sundays. And, you know, it's difficult to find internet access. So I feel like other cities have programs like this. Why not Salinas? We're moving forward. I feel like, you know, internet and things like this should not be ignored. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we will close public comment, go over to Zoom for public comment. Would any member of the public on Zoom like to comment on this item? If so, please use the raise hand function. Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public comment. We'll come back to council for final comments and action. I will start to my, sorry, yes, action, I apologize. Start to my, no, you're shaking your head.
Yeah, just for informational purposes.
No action. Sorry, thank you. I appreciate that. All right, with that, we'll go to Councilmember Osornio.
Yeah, thank you for the report. I'm really glad that this is, we're getting an update on this. I remember this being a really big item that we were, that we were all tracking because Salinas made national news, but probably not in the way that we would have liked it. But it's good to see that something's coming good out of it, because now some of the concentration points are going to be in the ALCAL, which, for folks that have lived in that area... points are going to be in the Alisal, which for folks that have lived in that area for their whole lives, being able to know that now there's an equitable approach to this is just, it's really, really great to see. So just wanted to be supportive of it. I do remember that there was a timeline when we did get the report that I believe was a little bit sooner than we, I don't know if it is than where we are now, but I just wanted to emphasize that we're, or I should, I'm very supportive of it, and I would really like to see this come to us as quickly as possible. So with that, I'd like to make a motion, or no, there's.
No, we're all very excited to make policy tonight. Sorry about that.
I'm supportive of it, basically.
Administrative report only, yes.
Thank you.
Councilmember for our final comments.
I concur with you on that. Mr. Gomez, thank you for your work. And I think one of the things, you've been with government for a while, and we move very, very slow here, but that's the way it goes. But I appreciate that things are happening, and there's a lot of excitement, I mean, to hear a Hebron student saying, you know what, this is a much-needed service. Who can argue with that? And you do see a lot of people in the coffee shops, you know, just everywhere. You see them at the Firehouse Recreation Center. You see them at the Salinas Boxing Club as well, at Clauser Park. So thank you for your work, Mr. Arroyo. Maybe when you want to work for the City of Salinas, De Vianas. And so thank you for the report.
Councilmember Sandoval, final comments.
Yeah, thank you for the report. I'm in full support, and, you know, whatever we can do to support you to make this move forward faster, kind of my support.
Councilmember Rocha.
Thank you for all of your work on this, and I want to echo the sentiments of Councilmember McShane and really advocate for the utmost urgency on the completion of this project. It's been a few years since we were in quarantine and in situations to where Internet was so really critical to people's, it was like a lifeline. And, you know, I was on a school board during the height of the pandemic, and those stories still traumatize me to this day. And the truth is, a lot of school districts stepped up to be providing hotspots, but school districts are educational institutions, not Internet service providers. And the pandemic really exposed a colossal failure of government to invest in this area. And we need to learn from that, move forward, and make sure that we are investing in this critical service to our community. And I will also push back on the notion that we should not call out and name underserved communities for essentially being, I would say, victims of historical exclusion of funding. I mean, it's important to name these things. You don't become an underserved community overnight. It's decades and decades and decades of lack of investment and government not choosing to prioritize the needs of that particular community. And oftentimes, we know it's due to race, really. And so calling out institutional racism, calling out historical exclusion of investment, and making sure that we are making a point to invest in underserved communities is critical. We can talk about underserved communities, but that has to be accompanied by direct action and investment. So very supportive of this and want to do everything I can to make it a reality.
Councilmember McShane.
Well, allow me to echo the sentiments of my colleague, Councilmember Rocha. I would just underscore the importance of addressing this at the underserved community level. Boy, shame on us if we're going to send Underline to another community with a bunch of fees. Like, we've really got to make sure we're on top of that, like, be proactive. This is a huge issue. I mean, I forget the math, it's not right in front of me, but it was like $15 to $20 of savings per month per family. You know, you take that across, you know, thousands of households where that's really the difference between live and die. Like, so I just really want to underscore, please get Underline on the phone, find out what it's going to take to start micro trenching tomorrow. Come to us with what's that problem? And if our fee schedule is higher, well, council, if you'd like to reduce that fee schedule or find a way to award and a grant so that we can address that, then we're micro trenching tomorrow, and we've got high-speed Internet available to those people that need it at an affordable rate and so forth. Thanks.
Final comments on my end, just certainly supportive of the project. I did bring this up the first time that you came forward, and something to consider. I do know that Underline's scope of work includes a minimum of 500 megabits per second speeds, and I just hope that that minimum increases as technology and broadband gets faster. And so while 500 megabits per second speeds might be very good now, it may not be in five years. So I just want to make sure that we're growing with that trend with this program. With that, thank you very much for the presentation and appreciate you being here to give it. Thank you. All right, on to our public hearing. 23-602, the substantial amendments to United States Department Housing, excuse me, United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, fiscal year 2017, 18, 2018, 19, 2019, 2020, 2020, 21, and 2022, 23, annual action plans. Say that 10 times fast.
Yes, quite a mouthful.
We have Rod Powell, our Community Development Assistant Director, to give the presentation. Welcome.
Good evening. It's not as complicated as it sounds. This will be a quick public hearing, hopefully, for you in support of your initiative to renovate the Hebron Family Community Center. So the Housing and Community Development Division of the Community Development Department is bringing before you a substantial amendment to several of its prior annual action plans. This represents our bringing forward unspent funds from prior projects that weren't fully expended because the projects were completed without the full expenditure of the funds or that were set aside due to some of the pandemic occurrences with some of the programs such as in-home improvements for accessibility in a program. A little bit of the background is that currently the city has allocated 1.6 million in funding towards this project. As you know, the city received a grant of over $8 million to start the project, but there's been significant increases in the cost of construction. And so now the project is facing a shortfall of $3.6 million. In support of bridging that gap, Community Development has proposed one prior substantial amendment, putting 1.4 million in, and then has recently allocated about $240,000 from one of its annual action plans for a total of 1.6. The item before you in the hearing today is to allocate remaining 1.4 million, and we're almost to that gap, but we plan to allocate more in a future annual action plan to bridge it. So tonight's allocation is 1.41 million dollars. As the mayor shared earlier, it's from several annual action plans. This will bring the total CDBG contribution from the city to the project of over $3 million. Funding is from fire fiscal years and is, as I said, from uncompleted projects or completed projects and unexpended funds. And this does require a substantial amendment in accordance with the city's participation, Citizen Participation Plan, because the 25% threshold of existing project funding would be exceeded. Little bit of background on the available funds. As you can see, there are four annual, prior annual action plans that are impacted at various amounts. The housing services references are from those in-home improvements for accessibility programs. That program was essentially set aside during the pandemic because it was difficult for contractors and staff to get into the homes at that time and to really assess. And then it's become cost prohibitive, and some priorities have shifted. We also have some amounts that are fairly sizable from the Moon Gate Plaza completion, and these are simply remaining funds left over after completion of the project. And then there's a very small amount from Grid Alternatives, which is a solar program. And then we are also requesting to move a portion of CDBG administration. It should be noted that the movement of these funds is going to help the city greatly with its CDBG cost ratio. Currently, the city is out of compliance with that expenditure of funds, so this will assist us in bridging that gap and moving forward with our correction plan that we have in progress with HUD. So the Citizen Participation Plan has required us to do a 30-day notice to hold a public hearing and then to allow for a public comment period. So in accordance with the plan, staff published in local newspapers on November 3, and the comment period ends today, December 5. There has been a draft amendment summary available to the public at request by email or in person at city offices for public review. We've also published several notices and posted on the city's website and at various locations with public notices throughout. There's been quite a bit of departmental coordination, as you can imagine, involving finance, legal, of course, library and community services, and public works that are now spearheading this project. In terms of SEQA consideration, there's no complications with that. This is not deemed to be a project that proposes replacement or construction, so we're exempt. Strategic Plan initiatives, this hits quite a few of the council's strategic plans and goals, including infrastructure and environmental sustainability, youth and seniors, public safety, as well as parks, recreation, and libraries' master plan, and Alisal vibrancy plan supports. And in fiscal and sustainability impact, there is no impact to your general fund. These are all federal HUD dollars that are coming forward to the city as an entitlement jurisdiction. And our contributions to this are entirely funded with CDBG entitlement funds. And with that, the recommended motion would be to allow us to submit the proposed substantial amendment to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the several financial, the several action plan years that we proposed, then allowing us to allocate the 1.41 million to this project, and then allow the mayor or designate to execute any appropriate agreements or documents necessary to complete the project. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Excellent, thank you. Councilmember Osornio, questions?
No, no questions. I'm on the Housing and Land Use Subcommittee, and we've spoken about this. Thank you again for bringing the presentation. I'll be reserved for comment. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Barrera.
No questions.
Councilmember Sandoval. Councilmember Rocha, questions?
Thank you. So just to clarify, we're going to be adding additional 1.4 million to the Hebron Family Center project?
Yes.
Yes. And that's on top of the 8 million that we received in a state grant, and I believe 1.2 million that we set aside with the American Rescue Plan, correct?
So your initiative, the project initially started with the grant award of over 8 million. I don't know the exact number. Following that, and kind of as has been happening with a lot of facilities and construction projects, the cost of construction and predevelopment has increased sizably. So a shortfall of 3.6 has been noticed. Community Development has previously done a substantial amendment to allocate 1.4 million. And then we did not execute a substantial amendment, but we included the project in an action plan year subsequently, so that left us at 1.6-plus million. And now this brings another 1.4 for just over $3 million total. There is still a gap, but again, as I referred to, we are looking at including that in our next annual action plan.
Yeah, I appreciate the context. I was just trying to get a better understanding of how much the city's invested in the project for reasons to let the community know how much, how important it is. So, but it was, I believe, 1 million or 1.2 million from the American Rescue Plan, correct? The 50 million?
That's not in my shop, actually, so I, I'm.
It was a little over a million.
She's nodding yes, so I'm assuming that's the case.
Okay, thank you. Those are all of my questions.
Do you want to answer? It's 1.5 million.
1.5 million from the American Rescue. Thank you so much, David, I appreciate it.
Councilmember McShane, questions? All right, I'll go out to the public. Does any member of the public wish to comment on this item? All right, seeing none, I'll go to Zoom. Does any member on Zoom wish to comment on this item? If so, please use the raise hand function. Seeing none, I'll come back to council for final comment and action. I'll start to my right. Councilmember Osornio.
Yes, again, it's just thank you for the report and the creativity of looking for the funding to be able to make this project go through. I do understand that the more that these projects get put out, it, we're just going to have an increase, period. There was a project that was supposed to be done in my district that was funded back in 2017, and it was to fund all of these great and amazing things. But then now that we're finally getting to it, it's only going to be able to do one item, which is like an artificial turf. So imagine being able to have this great project that we're able to get done, but because of the time it's taking to get them done, or maybe it's not a priority anymore and things like that. I just really want to say thank you for continuing to know how important this Hebron Center is going to be for those neighborhoods of the Terrace, Fremont, Hebron, Roosevelt, Madera neighborhoods. So I just wanted to say thank you to you and the team for being creative with this. Do we need action on this? I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Motion made by Councilmember Osornio, seconded by Councilmember McShane. Councilmember Barrera, final comments?
Yes, Mr. Powell, with your knowledge and years of experience, you went through with the city. I always get concerned, because we have, I'm looking at the city manager as well, we have multiple projects going on in the millions. And as we know, it will increase, I mean, imagine all the millions of dollars, for whatever reason, but because it's time and everything goes up, the millions of dollars that are lost there. I'm just wondering, as we continue with Hebron Family Center here, if we can learn something here, how we can disseminate these projects earlier in a more timely fashion? I don't know, there's a, there's got to be some kind of solution, because we are, we are spending millions of dollars just because of time.
Yes.
But thank you for your presentation and for the project.
Councilmember Sandoval, final comments?
Yeah, thank you for your creative approach to make sure this gets funded, and thank you for all your work.
Councilmember Rocha.
Thank you. I mentioned at the Housing and Land Use Committee, typically, I would strongly push back on any effort to pool funds from housing-related services, especially if it's funded by CDBG. But I recognize the council invested $12 million from the American Rescue Plan and housing and homelessness. We've received several millions of dollars from the state of California to address housing-related issues in our city, and we recently received the Housing Production Trust Fund, well, over $5 million. However, we have not nearly invested enough in children and youth in this city. And so this is a great project. As I count, it's nearly $10 million the city has invested in this particular project. And I want to take a moment to commend Councilmember Osornio for your leadership on this, for championing this project. This has been a need in the community for many, many, many years, and I think your constituents should be very proud of you for all of your advocacy on this. This is no small feat, and I'm happy to support the constituents of the entire city of Salinas, but specifically District 4, by making this a reality. The Hebron Family Center's importance cannot be overstated. Happy to support.
Councilmember McShane.
What he said.
Great, okay. And with that, we have a motion in a second. We'll call for the vote. Councilmember Barrera?
Yes.
Councilmember McShane?
Yeah.
Councilmember Osornio?
Yes.
Councilmember Rocha?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Yes.
Mayor Craig?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, we'll go on to the next item, ID 23-674, the 2023 to 2031 housing element. I just got asked about this at the Monterey County Mayors Association meeting and said, are you on time with your housing element? So with that, we have Grant Leonard, our Planning Manager, to give the presentation. Welcome.
That's right, thank you, Mayor and council members. Happy to report that we are on time with our housing element, one of the few cities in the county or the state to achieve that. So I want to highlight that and recognize that staff's been working on this for about a year now, and we last came to council in June when we presented a draft of this document. And since June, we've gone out to public comment, we've gone through the state review process, gone out to public comment again, gone through another state review process, made revisions, and here we're presenting a final housing element. And I will go over some of what went into it and then an overview of the plan. So very briefly, the housing element is the city's guiding document for all things housing. It establishes our housing policies and our housing goals and sets a number of actions to be implemented over the next eight-year planning cycle. And it is due to be updated this year. Its due date is December 15. And in addition to setting the city's policies and goals, it's also required to receive several different types of state funding. So very important that we do that so we can continue to receive housing grants. Understanding how important it is, the city undertook a robust engagement process for this, including traditional public workshops. We had three of them, in North Salinas, East Salinas, and South Salinas. And for the first time, we were able to offer interpretation, not only in Spanish, but also in indigenous Mexican languages. in indigenous Mexican languages as well, Mixteco. And then we also want to do grassroots public engagement, so we partnered with the Community Center, or the Center for Community Advocacy, and had an ambassador program, which would go out and conduct house meetings. Over 100 of those were conducted, as the photos here on the screen show. And then we also did specific outreach to farmworker community. And again, we're able to conduct these outreach efforts in English, Spanish, and the indigenous languages. Not on the screen, but also important is the city's budgetary outreach process that was conducted in the spring. We're able to piggyback on that and include some public or some housing outreach along with that. And what we did with that is then we compiled the main themes, the main topics that the community is interested in related to housing. So no surprise, the main issue is there's a need for more housing. Salinas has a very low vacancy rate for rental units, very few units come on the sale market either. And as a result, limited demand increases, or limited supply increased demand, there's an affordability crisis as well, so things are very expensive in Salinas for housing. But also, the city community pointed out a need to maintain our existing neighborhoods and our existing housing stock, to make sure we're focusing on housing for disadvantaged populations, such as seniors or folks with disabilities, to especially highlight our renter community and the resources they need, or as well as our farmworker community, us being an ag city as we are, and then to be innovative, as the housing division has been, pursuing new funding sources and new strategies and achieving the pro-housing designation this spring. So with that, we took those recurring themes, that community outreach, and we began to craft our housing plan with a little series of goals and policies. The first one is to increase the housing supply and opportunities for everyone within the community. So we'll do that by incentivizing development, working with developers to increase the production of housing in the city, continue to support the development of more accessory dwelling units. The city already has pre-approved plans for that, which we're, again, improve this spring. And we'll make sure we're supporting a variety of housing types, so apartments, condos, town homes, single-family homes, because it's not just one type of housing we need, we need the whole diversity of types. The second goal was to focus on tenant protections. Salinas is a majority tenant renter community, and so we want to make sure we have policies and programs that are intended to prevent displacement of renters, to make sure that we're supporting tenant right programs, and to provide education and outreach to tenants related to their rights, as well as connecting them with legal services if needed. The third goal is to make sure we have safe and healthy housing for all of our residents. And this focuses on improving the quality and condition of our existing housing stock, both our single-family homeownership units, but also our renter properties. And then to make sure that we have sustainable, healthy housing, so removing mold, removing asbestos, removing lead paint, really getting rid of those contaminants that may be in some of our aging housing stock. The fourth goal is to advance affordability and opportunity at all income levels, so this is really about spurring development of affordable housing. So we also have advancing rent stabilization, you received a presentation on that a few weeks ago. Also facilitating development of affordable housing. Here on the screen is an example of an Eden housing development proposed for 855 East Laurel Street. Also connecting residents to financial resources, such as first-time homebuyer assistance programs, or providing assistance to special needs populations, such as seniors or folks with disabilities. We also need to recognize the community's desire to stabilize and support our existing neighborhoods, so collaborating with the community on improving our neighborhoods is featured here as a photo of a more Salinas cleanup. Working with our code enforcement department to make sure that there are no blighted properties or housing units that have code violations. Also encouraging historic preservation, we do that with our Historic Resource Board, which meets monthly. And also working to reverse patterns of discrimination, we do that by implementing the ALCAL vibrancy plan, the Chinatown revitalization plan. And the sixth and final goal addresses the homeless issue and making sure we have homeless programs and services for our homeless community. That includes implementing the Coalition of Homeless Service Providers' five-year plan to reduce homelessness, the Lead Me Home Plan, enhancing our street outreach team, who we've recently received a state grant to do that, and facilitating the development of more shelter and transitional housing, including permanent supportive housing, as the evidence there with the photo of our Home Key Project, Good Night In. So just logistically, this does require a general plan amendment, because the housing element is a chapter of the general plan. So we just need to find that this updated version is consistent with our general plan and required by state law, which it is. And we did conduct a California Environmental Quality Act assessment of the housing element, and is determined to be exempt, because it does not approve any specific project, it only establishes policies and goals, so it's not have a physical impact on the environment. Again, the timeline, we submitted our draft to the state in July, received initial unofficial comments in August, that allowed us to issue a revised draft in September. We received an official comment letter in October, that's included as an attachment to your staff report. And then we issued a revised housing element in November, went to Planning Commission, received additional comments, and issued the version of the housing element, which is before you today on November 28th, also presented to Housing and Land Use Committee. We're here tonight for adoption, and then submit to the state the adopted plan by December 15th, which then triggers a 60-day clock for them to review and provide final comments, and staff can work with them on making minor edits and improvements. And the absolute deadline to receive certification by the state is April 15th. So with that, our recommendation is to approve the resolution, adopting the housing element and the general plan amendment, authorizing staff to submit it to the state, and authorizing staff to make non-policy revisions to the housing element in anticipation of future comments from the State Department of Housing and Community Development. And with that, we're happy to take any comments and questions and open the public hearing.
Excellent, thank you. I will start to my right, Councilmember Sornio.
Another great presentation, and thankfully enough, been able to hear the great things that we're currently doing at the City of Salinas. So I'll be reserving for a comment, thank you.
Councilmember Barrera? Okay, Councilmember Sandoval? Councilmember Rocha?
Thank you for your presentation. My question is, in October, you received comments from HCD on our draft housing element. Would you say you complied with the suggestions from HCD, or what was the city's response to the comments we received from the State of California?
Yeah, absolutely. We went through as staff and responded to each comment individually. We also set up two working sessions with HCD staff to review it with them, make sure that we're understanding their comments and responding appropriately.
Based on your responses to their comments, do you think that those concerns, if they were concerns, were, were dealt with?
Yes, we believe so. They generally focused on adding some additional analysis here or there, revisiting our site inventory to verify we had adequate sites for our regional housing needs assessment number, which we do, and then strengthening some firmly fair housing, fair housing actions, which we did.
Thank you. With that being said, I'll move the item for approval.
Second?
Okay, motion made by Councilmember Rocha, seconded by Councilmember Sandoval, Councilmember McShane, questions?
Yeah, Grant, are we going to be on time? The Monterey County Weekly wrote that article stating that it was, you know, in limbo, whether we'd actually meet the deadline. Did you read, I don't know if you saw that or not. What's the basis for that reporting? I don't know if you spoke with them. Do we have anything to be worried about, I guess?
Yeah, you know, we spoke with Weekly in the spring, but not for the most recent article. Again, the statutory deadline to adopt this housing element is December 15th, so if we adopt tonight, we'll meet that deadline, and then it goes into the review period with the state, which again is through April 15th. So I feel pretty confident, if we get approval tonight, we can email it off within the next two weeks, 10 days, and then...
Remind me of the teeth that the state has in all of this, should something go wrong? Doesn't sound like it would, but...
Yeah, so the enforcement element to the state has yet to be firmly established, but they are actually creating an enforcement division, so look forward to that. But what is currently outlined is that if you do not have an adopted housing element, you would need to complete any required rezoning within one year instead of three years. The city does not actually need to complete any rezoning, so that would not affect us. There's also the risk to financing, so not be knowledgeable for grants.
Got it. All right, thank you, that's all, Mayor.
Thank you. We will go out to the public for questions, or excuse me, go out to the public on this item. Does any member of the public wish to comment on it? If so, come on up. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public comment, go over to Zoom. Does any member on Zoom wish to comment on this item? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public comment. Coming back to council for final comments, we do have a motion. Thank you.
Yes.
Councilmember Sornio?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. And again, one of the biggest things that I saw in here that was, there was something different than what I had seen, was the community engagement. While, while I know that we're always in conversations to see how we can better improve that, I, I think that we do need to recognize how well of a job we did. There's this, there's this pizza place called Salinas Pizza in Acosta Plaza, and I'm sure you guys are well aware of it, because it's a pizza place where there was one of the boards outside where you could put the little dots on your priorities and where you would like to see things get done. So, one of the things that really jumped out at me was the community engagement that we're doing, and I just want to, obviously, again, commend, commend staff for that great work, and, and just say that we hopefully, it continues and it even improves, you know, time after time. So, thank you, and glad to support the item.
Yes, and there's no doubt, this is a great project. I think when we go out to the community, there's a, a sense of urgency, and then at the same time, there's a lot of excitement. And I did see this board over there by the pizza restaurant. I think as we progress in this, but it takes us a little bit longer or something, it's always good to go back to the same community, just to let them know, you know what, this is where we are, because a lot of times, we just don't do that for whatever reason, and I think that's what true engagement is, that way they can know that we're still doing it, even though it takes a little bit longer than expected. But thank you for your good work.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Yeah, I just want to thank you and thank my colleague, Councilmen Sornio and Rocha, for their diligence and their active pursuit, you know. For me, I think I mentioned that Housing and Land Use, it's a great plan, you know, I'd like to get periodic updates on its implementation. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Rocha?
Thank you, and thank you for your work. And I want to also extend my, my gratitude to Lisa Brinton and the entire community development team. I cannot express how proud I am of the work you all have done. I was able to attend some of the community meetings, and as Chair of the Housing and Land Use Committee, I was able to work with you all in several aspects of it, and I really just am so grateful for your leadership and all of your hard work. You should all be really proud of yourselves. I'm very confident that this housing element will be approved by the State of California. We have embraced a very pro-housing approach in this city, which is much needed, and we've seen other cities throughout the State of California that did not meet their obligations or embrace that approach, and then they were essentially penalized by the State of California. Obviously, if you're not in compliance with your housing element, you could lose access to certain funds, but also you're exposed to essentially builder's remedy, which could mean that if a project is in compliance with the affordability requirement, a local city council's ability to, to have jurisdiction over that is essentially waived if you're not in compliance with the housing element. I don't think we have anything to be worried about. I'm, I'm pretty confident this will be approved, but not only do I want to commend your work, but the substance of the housing element itself, it's very impressive. There's two things I want to point out from the housing element that stand out to me. Number one, we're explicitly mentioning rent stabilization as a goal through our housing element. So no matter what people's individual opinion is on the particular policy, it is recognized as a goal of this city through our housing element. Tenant protections is explicitly stated in Goal 2 of this city, and, and through the city council's adoption of this housing element today, certainly reinforces our commitment to both of those policy objectives. So thank you for your work on that, and I look forward to seeing all the great things that are going to come to our city because of this housing element. Happy to support.
Councilmember McShane?
Good.
All right, and with that, we've got a motion in a second. Go ahead and call for the vote, please. Councilmember Barrera?
Yes.
Councilmember McShane?
Yes.
Councilmember Sornio?
Yes.
Councilmember Rocha?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Yes.
Mayor Craig?
Yes.
Motion passes. Excellent, thank you. All right, on to our items for consideration. We have 23-723, Cluster Park Improvement Project Schematic Design. Just like to use the word schematics. Welcome. We have Jose Ariola, our Community Safety Administrator, here to give the presentation.
Thank you and good evening, Mayor and council. It's my pleasure, our pleasure, to be presenting tonight on the schematic design for the Cluster Park Revitalization Project. However, I will not be giving the presentation tonight, but I am here in support of questions. And I'd like to introduce our fabulous consultants from BFS Landscape, our principal, Principal of BFS Landscape Architecture, Larry Foster, will be giving today's presentation.
Yes, good evening, and thank you. Happy to be here to help you understand what schematic design is. And we'll go on, actually, we're even beyond that a little bit, so... But Beth Mass is, was, is our project manager. She's had a delayed medical leave, so she's unable to be here to this evening, so I'm going to help out on that. I've been involved in the project, as, as Jose mentioned. So basically, what we want to talk about today... Here, where I go? Hmm, there we go. To help you understand, you know, just go through this, briefly, reviews of goals and priorities. We will tell you about the Prop 68 application and award, the schedule, and then we have the schematic design phase, as has been discussed, that included community outreach, as well as the Prop 68 did as well. Then it goes through playground features, skate pace, space, those kinds of things that were desired in the community outreach, as, as was mentioned, by how important that is, and we, we agree, and that's been happening as well in this project. Just as the, the project team, and this is, this is Beth. So what the grant was about back, you know, when it was all instituted, was replacement and renovation of recreation and sports facilities and amenities. That was part of the, these are the items that were part of the grant, requirements, introduction of colorful and engaging art and play areas, and enhancement of public safety by increasing lighting and sightlines. So all of this was achieved through community outreach process that actually, you know, developed and determined how this design process was going to occur and what was going to be involved. It was informed program development because of that process of community development that then led to a conceptual design. That conceptual design, this is the, the plan that was prepared for the, as part of the, the grant submittal. And in it, as it talks about, several meetings were held between March of 2017 and February 21, in terms of developing what to be done here and what was, you know, desired and needed. The Proposition 68 application was submitted in March of 21. The requested fund, grant funding was, you know, 6.8 million and change, and the grant was awarded, hooray, in the fall of 21. So that was a, an exciting time, honestly. So then, in that process, is where, what we talk about here is how, where we are today and, and where we'd be going beyond today. Kickoff meetings in January of 23, the schematic design process started at that time, and, and continued through September of this year, that had, again, investigative studies, geotechnical reports, arborist reports, and so on, those kinds of things, the surveying that happened. Of course, an additional community outreach was done, and then many studies of cost alignments based upon the available funding and... based upon the available funding and budgets and what the programming was that was being desired to, to be included. The, we're in what we call now the design development phase. We're getting ready to submit the 50% plans on that, as well as additional estimating. This design development just takes the schematic and turns it into a more refined plan based upon the comments and so on and so forth received to date. And in this process, we are, you know, coordinating with the design team, civil engineering, geotechnical, electrical, and so on, structural, continuing cost refinement, and, and, you know, we'll be working towards the building permit. We are in the very early stages of this process at this time, looking to then get to the bidding and contract award in May of '24, May through August, and hopefully look to start construction in, in the August of '24 period, maybe September, somewhere in there, depending upon timing and everything. So that's an update of where we are at this point. The, this is a great understanding of what design development is, and hope to help you understand a little bit more about how that process has come about and where we are. So the community outreach was conducted in, in this, last, last summer, May through July, play equipment, site amenities, skate space, as was, you know, which is a lot different than a park, which we'll talk about coming up, skate park, I should say. And everything was bilingual in all of those studies. And what the summary determined, or what the outreach summary developed, if you will, was, you know, preferred playground theme, actually, which in this case was a Sea Explorer theme, that we've looked at in terms of developing some elements that could fit within that, that theme. The priority amenity at the playground is surfacing. Most requested playground equipment is a seesaw, so the littlest things can be a very important item, and that's what community outreach is about. So we had direct coordination also with the National Little League in, in terms of the, the two ball fields that we have that are a part of this and renovating those. So in that, as I've mentioned, we had the surveys, geotechnical, and we've had all these investigative studies, where there's been plenty of meetings and discussions of cost alignment to, you know, get things into the available funding, and we are in that realm right now in terms of what the city's budgeting. There's going to be more and more of that continuing. We take cost estimating very seriously and look to refine and discuss things that may need a little more refinement. So we have, and, you know, we're involved with the city, design team coordination, review of city standards, and of course, the preferences that the city, you know, prefers, as well as the maintenance. We, we pay a lot of attention to maintenance and operations when it comes to parks. this is where we are right now compared to the, the original site plan that you saw. So we've, this plan represents where we're headed with the development of the park, redevelopment of the park, that has, includes, of course, the two ball fields, which we'll discuss a little bit further, and then all the area there on the east side that has all of the new amendments in terms of the renovation of the basketball courts, just surfacing only. The asphalt there is in really good condition, so we really only need to surface them. There's a play area, a, a couple of age groups of play areas, and the skate space is up in the top right corner, in a farmer's market area as well. Jumps around, doesn't it? So here's a little enlargement. There's going to be also new scorer's booths and restrooms associated with the ball parks, batting cages, dugouts, all be renovated, renovated, new fencing in the, in the Little League Park there. So all of that's all part of this in terms of, and then tree preservation as best we can, renovating the horseshoe pits, you know, that was all in the desired realm of things. And then, you know, the fencing along Town Street and additional enhancements, and certainly rehabbing irrigation systems and, you know, bringing the natural grass back up to new standards, if you will. This is a little more focused on, on the other side there, where we've got the basketball courts and the play area, the group picnic, and, and the skate spot up there, which we'll show in, in a minute, hear a little bit more about that. But it's, it's really come together through all of the meetings that have been had, and it's working with staff, as well as, as mentioned, in the community involvement. So it's exciting to see it progress. This is an example of some of the equipment that would deal with the, the Sea Explorer theme, and so some of it is, is custom oriented, obviously, but it, it shows how this park can include the theme that was desired. This is the skate space. This is more of a, what you might find in a urban environment, if you will, as opposed to the rolls and the tubes and all the other kind of things you see in, in traditional skate spa, skate parks. This is a little more, oh, less involved, if you will, but yet still has the skate experience. And then there's also going to be, one of the things we, I failed to mention, is there is going to be a looped path that will have fitness equipment on it as well. That was also another element that was desired. And I believe that, oh, and then we've got, right. So the next steps, we meet with, we've got a meeting with the, the Design Review Committee coming up, I believe it's tomorrow, and continued coordination with, through all that process to ensure the budget and scheduling alignment. So all those will be discussed with the Design Review Committee. And that concludes the presentation.
Excellent, thank you. We will go ahead and go to council members for questions. I'll start to my right. Councilmember Sornio.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. One of my questions is in reference to the boxing gym. Just, just clarification, the, the boxing gym was not entered into the original grant proposal, was it?
No, the entire, that entire building was not part of our improvement project.
Okay. And then, by any chance, do we know if, has there been any discussions around what it would take to have some renovations to that? Do we, does the city, it might be in the parks and
There have been, but outside of the scope of this particular project. This is really related to the grant we received from Prop 68, but there are discussions in partnership with Public Works and Community Development on different renovations to that building.
Thank you. And then one of my questions is going to be related to the type of playground equipment. There was a photo in here with, with, it looked like maybe a youth on, on a wheelchair. Is that, how accurate is that, that the type of equipment that is going to be included in the design will actually be accessible?
Absolutely, yeah. Everything needs to be accessible or inclusive. So, yeah, all of that will be a part of it, including the surfacing.
Great.
To, to reach the equipment.
That, that's, that's really good to hear.
Yeah, oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then I know that there's going to be conversations about happening, happening around the budget, and if we're still on track for the budget. Earlier today, we were just talking about another project that's going on in Salinas that is, is just kind of going up as time is going on. Do you anticipate that there will be some increased costs? And, and then the second question to that would be, while it would be great for it to stay on budget, that's, that's great, but the amount of services or the type of equipment or anything else, we would, we would hate to, we'd hate to lose quality things. Can you speak to a little bit about that and kind of what you foresee?
Yeah, yeah, sure. Again, the, as we mentioned, there's been numerous rounds of, of cost estimating, but we're currently in line with the, the city's budgets, you know, as time goes on and so on and so forth, and we're refining the, the plan as we go. We build into, we build contingencies into, and escalation into our, our estimating process because we know that we're looking at, you know, not starting construction until maybe the, you know, coming up here at the, the end. Well, it was, yeah. We've allotted for the time span between now and start of construction and the end of construction. Things come up, you know, in any project during the process, so we, you know, we do allow for what we call construction contingencies that are a part of all of the budgeting to set aside, you know, for those things that do come up during every construction project. So we're doing the best we can to make sure that all of those things are lined in and included as we go. And I'm sure there'll be additional discussions with staff on, as, fine tuning those, as well as any other escalations that may be projected.
Okay. And then this might be, you know, and just, I, I believe I saw on their farmer's market, is that, is that something that is, is really going to be considered? I know that there's been conversations about having a farmer's market there in the past, just knowing about the need to have, be able to have fresh fruits and vegetables there. Can you talk a little bit about that?
Yes, we had a Vista staff about a year and a half ago who actually did a study on the feasibility of different farmer's markets across Salinas, and though Cluster Park was identified as a potential area, there was no space to do one because you can't do them on grass. And so our attempt here is to build in a potential space, but there are no necessarily concrete plans that, that there be a farmer's market yet. But there's now an option potentially with the redesign of Cluster Park, and now that there's a potential space to host one. That could be part of the discussion in the future.
Okay. And, and thank you for that, just knowing again how, how important it would be if there was some type of farmer's market there. I know Sunday after church at Santa Maria is definitely a, a great meeting place at Cluster Park. I think it'd be great to be able to have something like that there. Just thought I'd throw a plug for that. But I have, oh, the, the other question is, again, just because I want clarification on it, that's the reason I'm asking, I saw it in the, in the design. You know, Debbie Aguilar was a huge, huge community member here. I know that there is the Tree of Life that's there. It looks really beautiful around Christmas time with all of the lights and things like that. That's going to stay, right?
So we've been in touch with A Time For Grieving and Healing. As part of the assessments that Larry mentioned, we had arborists look at that tree, and unfortunately, it's not doing very well. It will need to be replaced. We are working with A Time For Grieving and Healing to identify the type of tree, and they've made their request. And so we'll work with our arborists and the design team to make sure we get either that tree or as close to that type of tree to replace it. The monument will still stand, and we'll keep that location. But that, it means a lot to that park, and we will keep it.
Thank you so much. No further questions.
Councilmember for questions.
And thank you for that, Councilor Sornio. Mr. Ariola, can we look at your, the agenda slide, please? I wanted to show you something. Where it says agenda?
Oh, if I can see this, first time. Oh, right back. Geez, pretty good right there for it.
If you can see that, there's some bricks. You see the bricks there? There's individual bricks there, and even all around the kiosko, when six Rotary Clubs came several years ago and they invested thousands of dollars and over 300 volunteers, somebody came up with the great idea, would you like to buy, donate a brick in memory of a loved one? So all those are memories there, and they all have names of, of a loved one. Have we considered, what are we going to do with that? Because not only are they here, and see that fountain there? That fountain was probably like 700 pounds, every third piece, and it was vandalized. I don't know who in the world stole that thing for him, for what reason, but it was, it was heavy. I know it was, it took like six of us guys just to put it together, so whoever took it must have been a really strong individual. But going back to these bricks, what have we thought? Because they're all, if you can see right around the sidewalk there as well, have we given it thought?
Absolutely, we've considered it. And if you look at the schematic designed area for either a fountain or an art piece replacement is built in, and the pathway will still exist, and we'll make sure to take care of those particular bricks. We have discussed that as a team, and we've been in touch with the Rotary, the lead Rotary Club, the Salinas Rotary around the fountain, because they had reached out to us, I think, the year we applied for this grant, and we asked them, they were going to try to refurbish it at the time. To, to answer your earlier question, it wasn't actually stolen, it was vandalized, and the large pieces are actually at the Public Works yard. So Salinas has them, but unfortunately, they are beyond repair. They were vandalized as such. And so we are working to come up with a nice replacement for this space, and we're going to work with Salinas Rotary to make sure that's done well, and with the initial vision of their initial work.
Great. And you know what? Around the kiosko, the kiosk, there are individual cement benches, and they were donated, I believe. There was like, I think there's six benches, and they're all, and names, the name of the Rotary that donated it. And, and you know, somebody vandalized the, what do you call those little pieces of glass? I mean,
Yeah, the mosaic tiles.
Mosaic tiles. I mean, they were all vandalized, but, and, and you know what? There's sentimental value here a lot because, I mean, one Rotary Club is all the way from India, and one's from my hometown in Masatlan as well, so what are we thinking about doing with these benches?
So we're, we've been engaging the Salinas Rotary to work with them to come up with some ideas. Those, the, most of the kiosko, the Placita, will not be necessarily part of the revitalization with the exception of the addition of an amphitheater mound, so rising grass that faces the kiosko for performances. And so if a bench is impacted by that space, we'll again, work with the Rotaries to make sure we honor the work before us, and that we, whatever we put in its place honors that work.
And I also appreciate you working with the Time For Grieving because that, that's very symbolic, all the good work that has been happening there. You know, in your report, you mentioned, because we do have a strong, very dedicated Little League community there. As a matter of fact, the Little League brings in hundreds of families to the park. You call it in your report that it is one, it's going to be one of the best in the region. What, what does that mean? What's, what's region?
One of the best in the city, and so, or the city Little League system, because there are multiple Little Leagues throughout the city. Everybody's always working hard through volunteers and raising funds to
Absolutely.
Improve their, their, their baseball facilities, and this will really go a long way in improving the facilities that currently exist, the baseball fields for National Little League. They're going to be completely redrawn fields, new turf, new state-of-the-art irrigation system, new concession areas. Kristin Lundquist, our LCS Director, as you know, among other things, is a big Little League fan and supporter in our city, and actually made it a point to work very closely with National Little League and meet with them along different steps of the design process to make sure they had their input. And to the best of our ability, we, we tried to honor their input in the design.
So I believe they do have a Board of Directors, so you, being in community engagement here, you have been meeting with
Our, our Director actually took care of that, and was in
Great, great.
In direct communication with the Board there.
Yeah, because I think that'll be a great part of the, of the park. You know, one of the biggest events that happens out there is, you go out there at 5:00 in the morning, you see a lot of senior citizens walking around the park. you see a lot of senior citizens walking around the park. How do you visualize, I read something in your report, something about half a mile of, is it trails or, it's going to be the walk space around the park? How do you visualize that?
Yeah, there will be a DG, decompressed granite loop about 10 foot wide that circles, not the entire park, but most of it. It's interrupted unfortunately by the basketball courts. So as it comes upon the basketball courts, they'll go onto the concrete to continue. When we did our initial community outreach for the grant, that was the number one activity done at that park, was walking and jogging around the park. And so now there will be a dedicated area for that around the entire park as well as some exercise equipment along the way.
It's going to be great. Mr. Ariola, can we look at the slide where you have the softball and the Little League, the green space between there?
Yeah, the clerks taking care of it. Thank you to our city clerks, by the way. They got it.
Yes, thank you. You know this--
Yeah. Well done.
Let's get to the, here we go.
Yeah. You know, this whole green space between the Little League park and the adult junior ball field, a lot of soccer goes in there. How are we addressing that? You know what, we have a lot of people that enjoy that, but sometimes I've noticed there's softball going on, or even at times, Little League going on.
Right.
And there's soccer, so how do we view that? Or are we going to be able to address it?
The way we're addressing it actually is by not flipping the fields and putting the fence on the other side, because that would disrupt the way the park is currently used for soccer. As you can see, the, where the fence line is right now, it still allows for ample green space so that you could play soccer with the remaining green space. So that's kind of how it was addressed in the design, was by not putting the fence on the other side.
Yes. And Mr. Ariola, as you're aware, I know you mentioned, and I'm looking at the city manager here, because that recreation center does need a lot of work. And we did tell the children we were going to put in new restrooms. But there's a, if you see that small square where it says Big Kid Plaza? With the same project with the Rotarians, that square, that little building, they made it into a tutorial center. They loaded it up with, I think it was, at that time, it was eight computers, where children would come in and do their homework, and it turned into a closet. Any idea with your project here, are we doing anything with that area?
So the Big Kid Plaza refers just to the blacktop space? Again, the building itself was not part of the project. Although we do recognize the needs, and we are trying to address it through other--
No, I appreciate that. No, this is going to be fantastic. We do have a small negative element that's persistent at Cluster Park. Even though it's the most utilized part, sometimes mom is hesitant of taking their children to the restroom because either there's negativity going on out there. I know the chief of police has helped us a lot, and we also have security. Any idea, once this beautiful picture takes place, how are we going to address vandalism? Because we will have it.
So in terms of prevention of vandalism, again, keeping sightlines open is something we've been trying to do as well. I think some of the tactics we are trying now with security, we may have to keep ongoing. You know, I think Cluster Park, has, that security has been an ongoing issue for us there. We don't want this beautiful new park vandalized. We have looked into the possibility of cameras and talked, and spoken with the Salinas Police Department about what that costs. Unfortunately, it's not in our scope of work and certainly outside of our budget at this time. But we wanted to understand what it costs so that we can look at other funding sources to make that a part of this park in the future. So that at the very least, we have an additional deterrent or something to help us, help law enforcement solve crimes after the fact. And so I think there's going to be multiple things we need to do. And what we have been trying is multiple different types of deterrents in that park, and I think we'll have to continue to do that for the foreseeable future.
No, this is exciting work. You know, to that, as we talk about construction contingencies with the timeline, and maybe I'll ask the city manager, any ideas, as money, or as the projects get more expensive with time, any idea, I mean, do we have money to finish the projects?
So as you, as you've seen in another facility earlier tonight, the Community Development Department funding an extra 1.4 million for Hebron, you're going to have similar issues here. And staff is always working to address those issues. And I, I expect, as you would, I hope that we can get to, to a greater point, to meet those needs. But there certainly are no promises on that.
Thank you. And just one last question. I know the Little League folks, they needed some kind of warehouse space of some sort, you know, those metal buildings or something to put their equipment. And then the concession stand that's there, how do you see in the Little League park? Yeah, you have it right here, the, is that concession stand going to stay there?
So up by the adult junior ball field, that's a scorekeeper's booth and, and storage building. So there is storage, there will be storage in that space, in that building.
Is that for Little League?
And the same with the bottom, with the scorekeeper's booth and the level two concessions, that's also storage. So there, there will be storage available in those, in those buildings.
Yeah, so Mr. Ariola, the concession stand is already there behind the home plate there. There's also restrooms in that one concession stand building. Is that all going to be redone? Do you know what building I'm talking about?
No, or the bottom?
The Little League.
The, the Little League field, you're saying there's currently restrooms there now?
Yes. But I, I don't know, yeah, in the, in the concession stand, there's bathrooms there, but I don't think, I don't know, at that, at one time, they were working, other times, it's not, but there are bathrooms there.
No, I don't believe there are plans to have restrooms there. I didn't know there were restrooms. Right here on this bottom?
Oh, oh.
Okay, all right. If I could have the audience refrain from responding, thank you. I appreciate the accurate information, however.
There's restrooms that will--
My apologies. Yeah, two single stall restrooms are here. And so there are restrooms on both ends.
Yeah, there are, but my question is, because they've been having problems, I don't know the current, but they were having problems with those restrooms. Are they part of the--
Yes, those will all be refurbished.
This is all, yeah, this is all part of the new--
Great.
It's on you.
I didn't know you were here, good, thank you.
Councilmember Sandoval, questions? Councilmember Rocha, questions? Councilmember McShane? All right, we'll go out to the public. Does any member of the public wish to comment on this item? Welcome.
I'm glad to see some of the improvements we're going to be making. I didn't hear you, because I had stepped out a minute. Now, is there going to be for access for the handicapped, like to go to the swings? Because in some of the parks, you can go with your wheelchair, take your children up to the swings and put them on the swings. Because that used to be really important to do that. But no, there used to be, and I haven't been to Little League for years now, but I had two of my children there and two at the Robinsons playing baseball. But, and I knew the adult one had newer, at the time, bathrooms. But my kids all grew up there, and all the neighborhood kids. I can see having a farmer's market there maybe once in a while. But the parking there is so bad that if you want to take your kids there to have a picnic or something, there's no parking. So with, when I've noticed that there has been a farmer's market or something there, it's just, you can't even get there if your family is having a picnic or birthday party. There's no way, no place to park. That's my only concern. I'm not against them, it's just that I know the problem that's there. So I am glad to see the improvements, and I'm sorry to hear that we've had problems for the others. And, because I was planning on putting some more bricks there with my kids' names. Didn't get to last time because everything else happened at the same time. So anyway, that was one of our plans on doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Good evening. Name is Eric Peterson. And regarding the tree for Debbie, there was a tree planted when my father died. It's redwood, and after a half century, it's thriving. Can be seen, it's in the backyard, can be seen from the street and everything. And if that fits the other requirements, that's a good California tree that'll last for, and I say, in my father's case, it's been over 50 years already. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hi, thank you, Montevia community. Very, very happy this project, Mr. Ariola, great. I don't know your name, but that's a great project. Thank you. I'm glad we're doing something back to the community, especially Cluster Park's been there a long time. And for the baseball field to be that rundown, it's, it's got it coming. That'd be nice to get that all done and that whole park renovated. But you got to reach out to your community, get them involved, so you get the vandalism stopped because they need to start making those phone calls to Mr. Felici so he can do his job and arrest these people. That's what we need to do, bring the community together. Everybody needs to come together and take care of this. Let's get rid of those fences, it looks like a prison. Get rid of that fence, make it look nice, make it look presentable. And of course, the parking is going to be an issue, it always has been. They want to maybe invest in a little bit of parking, just a couple handicaps, or a little, you know, a little bit of parking for the people, that'd be nice. But I'm for the projects, great. If you guys need any help, come see me. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hello. Good evening, mayor, city council, and staff. My name is Alvaro Molinado, and I'm a longtime Salinas resident. And I just wanted to come out and support, support this resolution. I really think it's a long time overdue. So I, there was some wishes, there was a wish list for National Little League that because of budget constraints and whatnot, it can be done, and I totally understand. But I'm totally for it, and I can't wait till you break ground and see the kids' faces smiling when we do have a new ballpark. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Yeah, my name is Malcolm Mahia. And I just want to state that a very fundamental aspect of project management is analyzing the risk of inflation. So hearing the fact that you guys are surprised at the cost of things, it would be my suggestion that all of your proposals be required to have inflational numbers added to them. So if you had a project that was seven years out, you wouldn't put today's prices, you would put the anticipated prices for seven years now to be in the project. If you know that you cannot do something today, using today's prices is a complete, complete lack of demonstration of understanding how to set prices for projects. So my suggestion would be that you require all your projects to have a risk analysis, that this risk analysis lists what you anticipate the prices to be, and you use the future costs to designate associated budget to future projects. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other member of the public wish to comment on this item? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public comment. We'll go to Zoom. Does any member on Zoom wish to comment on this item? If so, please use the raise hand function. All right, seeing none, I will go ahead and close public comment and come back to council for final comments and action. Councilmember Osornio.
Thank you for the, for the report, the update. Very, very excited to see this project continue to move forward. This was actually one of the first meetings that I attended with, through Zoom. And there was a lot of community engagement around it, and some of the folks that were in there, and then we'd go out into the breakout sessions. It was really good. It was, it was really good to, to be a part of it. And, and I do also agree that there are some pieces of the park that, again, that weren't included in that grant. But I'm, I'm hopeful that city staff is going to continue to work to see how we can get those renovations done. And I did want to just say, thank you for all of the work that Maricela and Albert are doing with National Little League. And I know that they're here in the audience today. It's folks like this that continue to be champions in our community to make sure that we're creating these opportunities for our youth. And I just wanted to continue to say thank you and show support for that. So I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Okay, on to final comments, Councilmember Barrera.
Yes, there's no doubt Cluster Park is one of the most utilized parks in the city. And people like Maricela and Albert, many, many years of passionate volunteerism and being there with, with the board, just volunteers. I mean, I always see people going over there and taking care of that park. You know, and to the Clusters, I want to thank the Clusters. They were a couple of dairy farmers that came from Denmark. They landed in the Alisal. They were on their way looking for the American dream. They bought a farm in the Alisal. And they were Catholics. They had some dairy cows, and they really loved their community. And at one point in time, the Clusters says, you know what? As we get ready to retire and go on to better and bigger things, we'd like to donate some land. You know, donated seven acres to where Cluster Park is at now. Not only is there the only school for autistic children in the entire Monterey County. We have classes for little kids there, first five. We had the Girl Scouts for many, many years at Cluster Park. I believe Little League has been there how many years now? Many, many years. And you know, to the Denmarcs, because of their Catholic faith, they also decided to give land to the Catholic Church. That's where Santa Maria Church is at. And with the kiosko, you know, when the Rotarians came together and they said, we want to do something like they do in the Mexican towns, let's put the Catholic Church in the kiosk close to it. And that became something fantastic. And you know, in my last comment, St. Mary's Church, the Catholic Church across Cluster Park, is the biggest Catholic church in Monterey County, worth 4,000 parishioners. And on Sunday, it's five masses. And when we did start doing a farmer's market, the priests put a stop to it because the people that were coming out of the first church, instead of going home, they'd come across the street to the parking Lot Menudo in Tamales. And there was no parking for the rest of the churches, the other parishioners. Imagine coming to the second, what do you call it, mass, and the whole parking lot is still full because everybody's at Cluster Park eating menudo and tamales. So, but it's fun. Cluster Park is a fun place. Thank you, mayor.
Councilmember Sandoval.
Yeah, I just want to commend the community on their participation, the Little League team, and thank you to staff and our consultant for this great work. And keep us updated as progress continues.
Yes.
Councilmember Rocha.
Thank you. I just want to thank all of our staff for all of your amazing work on these projects. You have several large projects going on at once, Hebron, Cluster, and then you're also doing the implementation of the American Rescue Plan Park Improvement, $2 million. Right now, in my district, Steinbeck Park is going to get renovated, and Tibetet Park was also renovated. So very, very excited to see the investment in our parks throughout the city. And this is going to be such a huge benefit to our community as a whole. So very excited to support the project.
Councilmember McShane.
Also excited, and Jose, thanks for remembering the Rotary Club, Salinas. I was part of that volunteer team 15 years ago. The bricks, the fountain, with the homework center. I'm glad that Councilmember Barrera mentioned that, so thanks.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Osornio, seconded by Councilmember McShane. Call for the vote, please. Councilmember Barrera?
Yes.
Councilmember McShane?
Yep.
Councilmember Osornio?
Yes.
Councilmember Rocha?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Yes.
Mayor Craig? Yes. Motion passes. Excellent, thank you. All right, next up, council and to the public, I'm told that because we don't have a full council, we will not be able to vote on the next two items. The next time that we can vote on those, I believe, is January 9th, which means both would be enacted 30 days after that. With that, I will go ahead and move to 23-714 Red Light Abatement Act Ordinance. And we have Chris Callahan, our city attorney, giving the presentation. And we have Chris Callahan, our city attorney, giving the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be brief. So council and members of the public, at several of your recent council meetings, we've heard from you loud and clear about the concerns you have with the prostitution activities that are occurring in the King Street, Roosevelt Street, and North Madera Avenue neighborhoods. As we've discussed in the past, a recent change in state law has tied our hands with respect to enforcement of the prostitution laws. And so your task force, for lack of a better term, of your city manager, your police chief, and your city attorney, we started to think of different innovative ways to get at this problem. Since we can't address the prostitution directly, we can address the other things that support this activity. And so what we're presenting to you tonight is one way of mitigating the impacts on the community from this illegal prostitution activities. State law has a Red Light Abatement Act. And what I'm recommending that we do is we take that and we incorporate it into your municipal code so that we can enforce those provisions. What it means is if a property, a hotel, an apartment, a house is being used for illegal prostitution activities, we can go to court and we can seek an injunction in order to prevent those activities from happening anymore. What it does is the court will say, yes, there's sufficient evidence that there's illegal activities going on here. And they would issue an injunction, which is basically an order saying you cannot do this on this property anymore. It also allows the city to recover its costs. And so that is the extent of the presentation this evening, Mayor and council. And as I've mentioned, your task force will continue to think of innovative and creative ways to get at this problem. And when we come up with additional solutions, we'll present them to the council and the community for your consideration. Thank you.
Councilmember Sornio, questions?
Yes, thank you. And just for clarification, city attorney, in the event, and the reason I bring this up is because there were several meetings that I was involved with, with community and some of the apartment complexes and homeowners in the area. In the situation where somebody was to drive into an apartment complex and something was to be done there along the lines of prostitution, would the apartment complex be liable? Or would the property owner be liable? Can you speak to that?
Well, it depends on the facts of that situation, councilmembers. So if an individual apartment was being used, we could go after the individual property, the individual apartment. But if they're just pulling into the parking lot, for example, and using the parking lot, I think that's a trickier situation. We'd have to look at that if that was actually what was going on.
Okay. But from what it sounds like is this would have to be something that can be proven in some capacity. For example, if there was a hotel owner or property owner that is actively engaging in this? And then can you speak to that a little bit?
Yeah, that's correct, councilmembers. So what we would do is we would gather the data on the number of times, for example, that that hotel was being used for these illegal activities. And we would, over a course of a period of time, gather that information. And if, when we feel we have enough evidence, then we would present that to the court.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, I'm gonna reserve for comments. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Burr, questions?
Yes, so Mr. Callahan, you said we can't vote on this one?
That's correct. So under your charter, in order to approve and adopt an ordinance at the same meeting at which it's introduced, you need all seven councilmembers to vote in favor of it. We only have six tonight. So we could only introduce it and bring it back in January for adoption.
And you know, earlier during our briefing, you were discussing if we do find out that maybe there is a hotel owner, for as an example. Give me the scenario. What happens are, once you find out that there's a property owner that's allowing this to happen? I think you said it, but can you just say it one more time, please?
Sure, councilmembers. So what would happen is your police department would monitor the activities at this particular property or any particular property. And they do a very good job of this. We already have information from your police department that certain hotels and properties are being used for these activities. They've already gathered this data. So you need to commend your police chief and your police department for already doing this before this ordinance has been adopted. So we take that information that your police department has gathered. We would present that to the court. And we would say, look, Judge, this is the situation of this property. We know that this illegal activity is occurring at this property, and here's all of the evidence of it. And we would ask them to issue the injunction. So that's how that process would work, councilmember.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Sandoval, questions?
Considering we can't adopt that tonight, is it possible that in conjunction with approval in January, we bring forward a letter of support? I know the chief was mentioning reaching out to the governor about the bill that is, I guess, causing some of these issues statewide. So I don't know if I would need councilmember support, but is it possible to bring something at the same time in January?
Yes. And I believe that there's already efforts underway. I think the Police Chiefs Association in the state is doing something. I know that Cal Cities is actively involved in this. But yes, councilmember, we could do that.
Yeah, I'd look for support on the council to do that in conjunction to...
I'd support John.
I appreciate that, too. You know, I think this is a, well, this is a question. So I'll reserve for comments.
Thank you. Councilmember McShane, questions?
Yeah, I'd just like to hear from the police chief on this. Chief, this is nuisance. We've heard from residents repeatedly. And I was telling the city manager that I went down a major rabbit hole reading and actually going through testimony when the state legislation came forward to legalize prostitution. How likely is it that you feel you have sufficient staff and ability to make a difference with what's before us today?
Certainly. Thank you for the question, Councilmember McShane. Certainly, we don't have enough staff. But we still address the issue. And as I shared with the council before, we will continue to address the issue because it is a quality of life for my community, and it's certainly unacceptable behavior. And we will do whatever the law allows us to do to curb this behavior. So yes, we still continue to use our staffing whenever possible to be present. We're spending a lot of money over time. It is my belief, and since I'm responsible for it, that it is money well spent because we have to address this quality of life for our community.
Do you have a sense of what your team's doing now? I mean, if you get a call for service on Market Street or, you know, in any area where this is occurring, what's typical protocol and what can you do now?
So even before we get those calls, whenever possible, depending on staffing and on calls for service pending, we do allocate officers to the area. And I actually, myself, have been there plenty of time at night, just driving around and be visible, not really to catch the criminals in the act because it's kind of hard to do, but to truly deter the possible clients from coming by. So when they see a police car, obviously, they continue on. We have arrested plenty of people for driving under the influence of alcohol. We have to commend the sheriff's office who helped us out in situations like that. And myself, I arrested people for reckless driving, doing stuff they shouldn't be doing. So we're trying to do what we can to curb what's going on.
Talking to other chiefs in other jurisdictions, do you get the sense this is a growing issue? And did the state legislation empower or enable a growing issue?
Without a doubt. There is no question about it. The decision to change the law probably was not well thought out. The California Police Chiefs Association was against it.
I see.
We were very vocal about it. And we see the results of it. So hopefully, we can encourage the governor to revisit his decision and maybe find an alternative to what he's thinking, you know, whatever he was thinking when he signed the bill into action, into law.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, thank you, chief. And maybe my just last question to the city attorney. This is the best your staff's got. I'm not, I don't want to be critical. I appreciate you doing something. But it just, when I think through how... This just seems complicated to me. I don't know if it's gonna be, maybe it's a complicated issue. I just don't know if we're gonna see a result.
Well, councilmember, I would submit to you this. It's better than nothing. It's better than doing nothing.
And this is the best alternative?
And this is one tool in our bag, one more tool. And there may be additional tools that we think of and can bring forward. And I just want to correct something that you said at the beginning. This legislation from the state did not legalize prostitution. It is still illegal.
Yeah.
All this did was change lawyering for purposes of prostitution.
Understood, yeah.
It's an important distinction.
Yeah, it made it easier for prostitution to occur, in my opinion. But everybody might have a different opinion. Okay, that's all. Thank you, Mayor.
I'll reserve for comment. We'll go out to the public. For those members of the public that wish to comment on this item, feel free to stand up. We've got two minutes. Welcome.
Yeah. I just want to commend the police chief for standing here and answering your questions and acting responsible for a situation where we're understaffed and we don't have police. And the word "anarchy" can now be introduced to the condition of our city. My wife and I want to leave because we don't have policing. The fact that they're underpaid ninth out of 10 counties and understaffed and then asked to be able to resolve and police the prostitution when they can't deal with noise complaints, when they can't deal with aspects of our civil life that support our sanity and our citizenship, I just want to commend you for taking their questions seriously when the condition of your police force is not.
Hi, welcome.
Good evening. Name is Eric Peterson. In the previous meetings I've, and also Police Community Advisory Committee meetings, I've mentioned the situations of a couple of women I know who are both former prostitutes. One went on to become the live-in assistant to a disabled veteran, which made him happy, made her happy, made me happy a really good deal. I would like to ask if, in addition to this, we could reach out to Monterey County. Salinas doesn't have social workers. Monterey County does. And they have other resources that could be used to redirect some of these. As I say, the woman I knew from Salinas got redirected and became productive. And the other one, the one in Colorado, Mary, is in a good situation that she hates. But she's basically in a barter situation for doing housework. So she's at least productive. And if these women can be redirected into... We've got a lot of help wanted signs in Salinas. If they could be trained or whatever has to be done to get somebody into a real job, it would benefit not only the individual, not only the neighborhood, but Salinas as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and city council members and city manager and attorney. My name is Gloria de la Rosa, and I'm from Laurel Heights. And I'm here right now to speak. Are you all aware about the morale of your police officers and how you are losing police officers? And the community wants results when they call.
Councilwoman, former councilwoman, excuse me, I would ask that you stay on topic with the city's ordinance for the red light abatement. So I want to make sure that we are addressing the topic at hand. Thank you.
Okay. So for me, and I'll stop right now, if we need police officers to address the prostitution issue, is you need more staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Buenas tardes, miembros del Consilio.
Uno momento para tradición. Gracias.
I'm sorry. Okay, I'm gonna try to say it in English.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening. I just wanted to thank all the staff. My name is Martorte, and I'm a resident in District 4. So I just want to thank every one of you. I think this is like, I know it's like the city attorney says, just a tool. But I'm glad something is happening now. That makes me, you know, hopeful that this is gonna change. It's not gonna be right away, I know. It's gonna take time, but at least something is happening. So I just want to thank every one of you and the police chief, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hola, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Verónica León. Soy una organizadora comunitaria con el Centro de Abogacía de la Comunidad, como CCA. Yo también vengo a agradecerles hoy esta tarde por tomar en cuenta lo que están haciendo porque la verdad que es muy lamentable todo lo que está pasando en nuestra comunidad y más porque nuestros jóvenes lo están viendo. Yo sé que va a durar tiempo y van a tener que buscar muchas pruebas para hacer algo. Pero gracias por escuchar la comunidad, por escuchar todo lo que nuestra comunidad está pasando con estas mujeres en nuestros vecindarios.
Good afternoon. My name is Verónica León, and I'm an organizer with CCA. And I want to thank you because you have taken into consideration our voices, and you're doing something. I know the community is going through a sad situation. Our youth are having to be witness to this. I know it's gonna take time to get the proof necessary to be able to address the situation. But we really thank you because you're here in the community.
Buenas tardes. Primariamente, muchas gracias por ayudarnos a ustedes y también al Departamento de Policía porque sí, ha habido cambio. Yo vivo allí en las Casas de Madera. Ya nos está poniendo así como antes que, ay, Dios mío, una filonona para poder llegar uno al apartamento donde vive. Y luego, este, aparte, había más de los padrotes que se estacionaban en nuestros estacionamientos, y no podíamos nosotros estacionarnos. Ahorita pues ya hay todavía. Se molestan cuando uno les dice que, por favor, se quiten porque es del paqueadero de uno. Se molestan y se quitan, pero se ponen en otro de otra vecina. Este, gracias porque sí, nos están apoyando, pero todavía falta un poquito más.
Good afternoon. I want to thank you. I want to thank the police because we see a difference. We see that they're helping us. There has been changes. I live in Casas de Madera. And even though Mr. Bason's still there, oh my God, it's not like it was before. Before, there was a big line to be able to reach our apartments. Now, when we live, yes, there are some cars that are parked there. We ask them to move. They get upset. They go to another apartment. But at least we're getting the support that we need. And thank you so much for listening to us.
Hi, welcome.
Buenas noches, miembros del Consilio Mayor. Good evening, everyone. First, I want to thank you first for the thing you're doing at Cluster Park because, don't forget that 10 years we've worked in the Alisal community to advance and make changes in the Alisal community. So thank you. Finally, we're seeing changes. And thank you, everyone. We've been for 10 years involved in the whole community. But this is not the point. My point I'm talking because also thank you for the Sornio City Council supporting the residents, Antonio Barrera, that went to here to listen to people, to the community, to listen to their concerns, to listen to every history of them, you know. It's a shame. It's a shame that our community, that supports in the rich country that supports in the rich country of the world and powerful and everything, our families face that kind of, you know, the problem, their kids, their daughters. It's a shame. They confuse them with the prostitutes, and they're ashamed. They're afraid to go outside because somebody will ask for, offer money for, for sex. So, thanks for everything, the people who attended last march, but the residents keep thinking about what we can do. To listen you're doing something, that's good. So, thank you for that. As you said, any tool is helpful. That's good. But as many tools we can use. The last time I recall, 10 years ago, the police wasn't involved, and they used cameras. They put cameras to scare the people, the providers or the clients. So, it was helpful. Residents said for 10 years it was really quiet. They came back again, and somebody says, thanks to the march we did before, now it's less. Actually, the lady said, now it's a little less, but it's still happening. So, if you can go to the community, listen to them again, and share this idea you have, would be great, because we can share more and the people can engage in this discussion. So, thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Hi, just want to thank everybody here for trying to address this. It's gonna be very difficult. It's something that comes down from the state. You really have no control over it. We understand that. Thanks to the police chief. He's doing everything he can. I know in my community, he's always there. I give them a call and they show up. I mean, it's not right away, but he does what he can. We appreciate that. This is gonna take a long time to get this done. This has to go through the governor and get it redone. It's a lot of red tape we don't see. We're a small community compared to, you know, the state, so just everybody just be patient. I think we'll get through it and it'll get done. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hello, everyone. My name is Leo de la Rosa. I, first of all, I want to thank the chief for having the patience with me. I bug in my lap about a lot of issues. Also, our attorney. And I always said, where there's a wheel, there is a way. And I think the doors are opening. We're finding ways, and I want to thank chief. All of you. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no one else for public comment on this item, I'll go ahead and close public comment. Go to Zoom for public comment. If you wish to comment on this item, please use the raise hand function. All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public comment. Come back to council members for final comments. No action. And do we need to table it officially, or it just comes back on January 9?
It's introduced now and it'll come back in January.
Okay. With that, council member Osorio.
I really just want to say thank you to our city attorney and his staff. When I started meeting with community groups like BHC, CCA, LULAC, and Casas de Madera, this was a really, this still is a very, very concerning issue. And once we had the march, we would ask ourselves, like, okay, so now that the march happens, what are we doing? But to be able to see how quickly we're trying to get creative, because we've also had conversations with Chief Felicia. He was actually at the march, and so was the mayor. And to know that the mayor was on a ride-along just to see the activity and took time to go into that neighborhood and just really see firsthand what we see on a daily basis, driving down there, it's just, it's gonna take that approach. It's gonna take all hands on deck. So, I just wanted to really say thank you to the city attorney for making one more step in the right direction and just not staying idle. For folks like ourselves that live in this area, it is very, very sad to see. District Four has always been plagued with prostitution, even when it was behind Long's Drugs on Rieda Court, and then it was moved to Kern Street. So, what we're doing today is hopefully another way that we could continue to work in the right direction. I've got to say that it almost seems like if there's a patrol officer that's either waiting on a call or kind of going from one place to the other, it seems like that's the parking point, because there's, it seems like there's always a police officer there, at least the times where I've seen. You see the lights on, but again, I just want to say, it's gonna take that approach, all hands on deck. What can we do? Because we can't, we know that we can't rely solely on the police department, because this is a Sacramento issue. So, being able to continue to find ways to get creative, I know that, I've said this in the past, creating a committee right now that has service providers like Monterey County Rape Crisis Center, YWCA, you know, organizations like CCA, BHC, community groups, business owners, and already our internal team that we have in city attorney and city manager. I think it's just gonna be, it's gonna, that's what we need to do to address this issue. And again, even if it's just putting up a billboard, even if it's putting up more lighting, if it's putting up cameras or doing detours, blocking streets, security, whatever it may be, there is a way that we can do this. San Francisco and Oakland has literally closed off streets to be able to deter this, and it has worked. So, I just want to say that this is a very, very good step in the right direction, and I want to thank all of the organizations and folks that have been showing up to our meetings. We were meeting almost sometimes every Monday, and it was getting a little, it was just a lot of work. So, just wanted to say thank you for everybody that was involved.
Councilmember Barrera.
Yes, thank you. And mayor, thank you for being there as well. I want to thank our chief of police. Not only was he there, but he was our patrol. He was doing patrol at that march. And you know what? I think there is excitement, because people are seeing that we are being progressive on this issue. Pretty quick, by the way. I want to thank the city, we met with the city manager. He said there was, city manager, city attorney, and the chief of police have been meeting regularly to look at issues, how we can provide solutions for this. And I think to the folks that live out there as well, they deserve good quality of life. And chief, I'm gonna say something, and you know, you and I speak truth when we speak to each other, but I'm gonna say this in public. You play a pivotal role in this city. You're a big, I mean that. And the reason I say that, I've met with your police department. They respect you because you have word. You're out there showing them, you know what, if I can do it, you guys can do it. You can be out there. And for the city attorney to give you a compliment tonight, that's gold. You can't buy that, because he doesn't compliment you often like that, you know. But that's awesome. Where a city attorney can say, you know what, you're playing a big role in this issue, looking for solutions. So, I want to thank you for that. And for whatever it means, the city needs you, especially now. So, I'm not gonna say here. Okay, thank you, mayor.
Councilmember Sandoval.
Hey, I want to thank the community, first of all, for organizing and showing up and being consistent, because all too often, for many years, I remember people coming to council and bringing up an issue, and there was never any action. There was never any follow-up. And I think, you know, first and foremost, thank you to the community, the police chief, you know, does a great job, and the police officers. We know that they make sacrifices to put in this overtime. And, you know, in speaking with them, I understand they're people like us. They got families. They have commitments, and so I appreciate your police officer dedication as well. Tony was right. The wheels of government move very slowly. One thing this council is working to address is how we can implement policies that make us more efficient. And so, this was a fairly quick response, although not a complete response, but a good step. So, thank you to the city manager, city attorney Callahan. This is one of the creative tool until we can address this issue statewide that, I mean, I didn't see this coming. This is just a great tool. So, we know too, I'm gonna acknowledge your longtime work. This is a testament to your ability to organize and implement change in our community. You know, you help empower. Also, I'd like to thank Margaret Benetti, who reached out to the, one of the original sponsors of this legislation, and found out that apparently there was either a commitment from the governor to revisit after a year. And we're hitting, I think we hit that year mark already. So, you know, it's a good time for us as a city to reach out to the governor and express our concerns and what we can do to improve this. So, thank you to my colleagues on that, and good job, community.
Councilmember Rocha, final comments.
Thank you. I want to thank the community for your intentional efforts here. And I want to thank our city attorney. Earlier in the meeting, you clarified something, and that is that prostitution is not legal in the state of California. And we, as elected officials, have a duty to make sure that the rhetoric we are using is honest, intellectually is truthful, and is compassionate. I think the easiest thing you could do as an elected official in a position of authority is to use your position to engage in rhetoric that riles people up, to engage in rhetoric that can be misleading and really harmful to people. The author of this bill, you know, we're often asking, what was the intent? What was the original thought process? The author of the bill said, when they brought this forward, that the criminal provision, which was repealed, results in, and this is a quote from the author of the bill, "results in disproportionate criminalization of trans, black, and brown women, and perpetuates violence towards sex workers. This criminal provision is inherently discriminatory and targets people not for any action, but simply based on how they look. People who engage in sex work deserve to be treated with dignity and respect." And the reason I bring that up is because as we were having this discussion and the community was coming forward, one reoccurring theme that I heard from members of the public was, I'm not here to judge anyone. I'm not here to engage in public shaming. I just want to be able to go home to an environment that is nurturing and safe for my children. And if the community can engage in that kind of rhetoric, then at the very minimum, that should be expected from the elected officials who hold the most power in the room. The easiest thing you could do as a person in a position of authority is berate others, point down on people, and engage in rhetoric that's not helpful. So, I really want to, you know, bring that up. And I really want to thank the council member of District Four, Landry Osorio, for your leadership on this. This has been an issue that's plagued District Four for at a minimum of 20 years. This is not something that happened overnight, but you know what did happen? The community came here, and within months, this was brought forward and an ordinance was drafted. And here we are today to discuss this. And I also want to thank our city attorney. I do take offense to a comment made, is this the best you can do? Mr. City Attorney, Chris, I know you, and I know you would not bring forward anything that was not your best work. You are a very, very talented and skilled attorney, and I appreciate this intentional effort to address a systemic problem and a structural approach to this issue that doesn't further weaponize the law in a way that criminalizes people who are black and brown or trans disproportionately. And so, the manner in which we approach this is going to be a reflection of the ability for this council to not engage in fancy speeches, but rather to do the difficult work of working conjunction with the community, getting into the depth of the policy, and creating an ordinance that meets the needs of our community. And I think that this is a step in the right direction. What I want is for the children of this particular neighborhood to have the same nurturing and safe environment that the children of South Salinas have, the children of Carmel, Pacific Grove, and Monterey. And I think that when we look at the impacts that are happening to this particular community, which is historically disadvantaged Latino community, it is, in essence, a failure to not address this, because it's perpetuating additional harms to that community. And I don't think it's fair for the residents who live there, and they deserve better. This would not be happening in a more affluent community. So, I want to make sure that we are balancing these real issues and real people's lives as we're discussing this. So, those are all my comments. Thank you.
Councilmember McShane, final comment.
Yeah, thank you, mayor. The whole situation disgusts me on so many levels. And I just want to thank the residents of Laurel Heights. I want to thank the residents of Montebaya. I want to thank the residents of the area, and certainly CCA for being here. I think that you've spoken, and we have something before us. You know, I want to make it clear. Well, and I also want to thank council member Osorio, council member Barrera, the mayor, our city attorney, our city manager, and our police chief for taking this issue seriously. I think having a police presence is very important. And again, I just want to start by making it clear that I don't know if a committee or kicking the can to Sacramento is the right way to solve this. I think at least one person before us said, it's a policing issue, in the sense that we don't have enough officers. You know, a call for service in this capacity is not gonna rank as high as a domestic or an attempted murder. And with nine officers on a given shift at any given time, with 20 square miles and 180,000, depending on how you count residents, it's gonna be hard. So, I think this is to be continued. And to the residents that are passionate about this, stay tuned. Make it clear, for those that don't know, that in the last three budget cycles, as a portion, a proportion, a percent of our city budget, we have decreased the funding for our police department. It's been hard to recruit. We've lost staff. I mean, it's a compounding issue. And we don't see the violence we saw in 2015, when there were 29 murders in our city. So, let's just wait and see. But I do believe it is a staffing issue. I do believe the presence of police in the area has made a difference. That's one thing I know I've heard, and we're committed. So, we'll see you again on January, is it 4th, Chris? 9th. That's all. Thanks.
Just final comments from me. I would, just in agreement with council member McShane in identifying, I think we have one officer on duty in that entire area. And arguably, part of the problem when I did my ride-along was just recognizing the lack of staffing to be able to really comprehensively approach it. So, I do appreciate the city attorney coming in with different options and a tool, as we keep saying, one of many tools, hopefully, that we can bring forward to be able to successfully address the issue. It's very much a problem. I spent seven hours out there undercover and got a firsthand look at the difficulty that District Four is experiencing. So, certainly happy to support any tools necessary to help work and reduce that. No action, as we don't have a full council, so we will go ahead and mark this report received. We'll go on to the next item, 23-699, California Senate Bill 329, city council compensation. And we will receive a report from our city attorney, Chris Callahan.
Thank you, mayor, and members of the council. So, just recall, at your last meeting, you provided direction that an ordinance be prepared and brought forward to increase the council's compensation, to include the mayor, the amount of $2,550 per month. That ordinance is attached to the staff report and is ready for your consideration. And I just want to sort of frame the discussion a little bit to refresh everyone's recollection that the last time council member compensation was increased was in 1984. That was 40 years ago. And since then, a lot has occurred with inflation. The cost of living has just become unbearable for a lot of folks. And so, I want to read something from the author of this bill and to sort of frame this for folks, because there is some concern and some consternation of the council considering what's been termed a 400% salary increase for themselves. So, city council members have one of the hardest jobs in California government. They deal with a wide range of issues, from street maintenance to emergency response duties. All too often, they do this job with very little financial compensation. No one runs for city council in order to make money, but the low levels of pay make it much harder for them to balance their careers and personal obligations with the calling to serve their community. The legislature has not raised the base pay amounts for city council members since 1984. It's time those amounts caught up with the present economic reality, especially with the rapid increase in inflation we've seen recently. Raising the pay will also make it easier for members of marginalized communities to serve. City councils should be reflective of the communities they represent, and the author believes raising their compensation is an important step to achieving that equitable outcome. Similarly, the Cal Cities has weighed in on this. Lengthy time commitments and limited pay discourage many, especially low-income residents, single parents, people of color, and young people from running for public office. For many, being a council member is a full-time commitment with part-time pay. Cal Cities is proud to sponsor this important legislation that lessens barriers for those interested in governing at the local level. This overdue reform is another tool communities can choose to use that can help ensure our city councils are reflective of the residents who live, work, and play in their communities. So, this process, council members, under the legislation, requires two regular meetings, at least seven days apart, for the ordinance to be considered for adoption. So, you don't have a full complement of council members tonight. This one will also be brought back on January 9th for your consideration. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. I do know that we had a pretty extensive conversation in the last council meeting, but if there are any additional questions, we'll go down the dais. Councilmember Osorio, questions?
No questions. Madam mayor, I'm gonna reserve for comments.
Okay. Councilmember Barrera, questions?
Yeah, just out of curiosity, what happens on the next time that we meet if we don't have a full council?
Um, council member, you won't need a full council. All you'll need at that point is a majority of the council to adopt the ordinance.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Sandoval, questions?
Yeah, if a council member should choose to not accept the compensation, do they have that option?
Yes, council member, they do.
Councilmember Rocha? Councilmember McShane? Okay, we'll go out to the public. Does any member of the public wish to comment on this item? Hi, welcome.
Hi. The fact that when I call the police, I'm told that nobody will come out is a great concern to me. The fact that, as I stated earlier, we have the ninth lowest pay for the police. If the money that was gonna go to the city If the money that was going to go to the city council competes for money that would support our police force, I would urge that you resolve the issue with our public safety before you resolve the issue of your financial burden as you sit in seats that you've chosen to sit in. If there's any of this money that would be taken away from our police force, I ask you to please put that money into the pool that allows for us to pay our police. You cannot manage a city without public protection. And again, if you're not the one that's calling, and you're not the one that's being told by the police that they don't want to go out because they're understaffed and they're afraid to go out unprotected, they themselves are afraid that they're not protected human beings.
Sir, I'd ask that you stay on topic with council compensation.
That is the topic. I want to make sure that we can humanize the condition of our police force, and if this money is competing with that, then I want you to deal with our police and our safety first.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
I'm over my quota. Name is Eric Peterson, and I totally support this. And I realize I've been around this enough. I know how much time is spent. It's a lot more than showing up for a meeting for a few hours, just committees and reading and all sorts of stuff. It's not an easy job, as the city manager said. Janet Barnes once told me she spent 40 hours a week on city council. Had brief conversation after one of the meetings recently with the mayor, and I mentioned she is well aware that one of my personal role models, my personal heroes, is a guy who was a city council member in Menlo Park where I grew up, and that guy named Mike Belangi. And when he closed his business, he had to resign from city council because the job he got was running the Chamber of Commerce. If he had been able to sustain himself without having to get another job, I'm sure he would have at least been able to fill out the term. He was excellent council member. And it's a situation where there are, it costs money to be on city council. It's not, it's something where you're sacrificing. You know that as well as I do. And just because of that, I would like to totally support what the city attorney has given you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wish to comment on this item? Hi, welcome.
Hi. So good evening. My name's Eloise Shim, and I'm a Salinas, a fairly new Salinas resident. I think that each member receiving about, what is it, $3,000 a month, or it's $2,500 a month, and the mayor receiving the same amount, it would be about $21,000 per month and about $250,000 to $300,000 annually. And I do believe that the mayor's amount should be more than the council members because she does more and has more responsibility and more visibility. And San Francisco's mayor, London Breed, she makes $400,000 a month. L.A., Karen Bass, $300,000. Shen Tao in Oakland, $200-plus thousand. But I think the total amount is excessive because the residents routinely complain about lack of attention to roads, sidewalks, playgrounds, the general safety and security of the residents, especially children. And this council unanimously and collectively allocated $300,000 for a cannabis consultation and accounting to an outside firm, and I think that was a frivolous payout. In Palo Alto, the council members get $1,000, and that was up from $600. And the median, the medium is $80,000 for the residents here, and the residents here have $56,000. So I think that
Ear turns up.
The stipend should reflect the community and not the wishes of the council.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, y'all?
Hi, welcome.
I'd like to comment. Hi, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, members, city council. I'd like to comment on it. If we could actually come to an agreement, I think it's a little high. I think it's a little too high. We have other issues we need to fix here. First of all, our police department. We just got the, what is it, the city workers that just barely signed a contract, what, a month ago or a couple weeks ago? I think there's more important things to do. I mean, no one becomes a council member to get rich. Am I right or not? You do it to help your community. I do what I do. I don't get paid for it. Believe me, I do a lot for my community. I don't expect any money, no compensation at all. I'm just saying, we should redirect the funds where we really need it. Let's build better skate parks. Let's beautify all the parks. Let's fix all our streets. Let's take care of our community first. When we're done, then we can take care of everybody else. That's just my opinion. No disrespect to anybody here. Thank you, and have a good evening.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Good evening again, Mayor and city council. I'm just amazed because a lot of you have used the word transparency. So where was the transparency? Why didn't we get community engagement? We had to find out that this was, that this is going to happen. I'm not going to say that you shouldn't get an increase, okay? But this is a high one. Maybe you should think about that, okay? Think about it, because I'm telling you, people are not here tonight that, yeah, are not happy with this. And we're going to come back on the 9th, is that correct, Mayor? To make the decision? Okay, that's what I'm asking for. Transparency, like you have said that we should have with the community, let it happen. Notify the community what you're going to do. And I expected a graph to show everything and also the car allowance. Are you going to get a car allowance also besides this? Question mark. It should all be shown. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public wish to comment on this item? Hi, welcome.
Mary Ann Ward again. First of all, I appreciate all of you. Always have. But I know how hard you all work. But remember, when you ran, you ran without even knowing how much you were going to get for a long time. I didn't even know any, you know, except maybe the mayor got something. My opinion, a mayor of this city should be full-time, because actually, that's exactly what they do. Of all the mayors I've worked with, they've had to go home after midnight and go back to their work to do their work, or get up in 4:00 in the morning to do their work so they could be at a meeting at 9:00. So a mayor should be full-time. I'm not against you guys getting a raise, but from $700 to $2,000, you could quit your But anyway, at least you'd be getting what I'm going to be getting. But I do believe the mayor should have a full-time mayor in this town. I think it's about time we do that. And I don't, I'm not against you getting a little raise, but not a $2,000 one. And I think our community could be putting into it, because I know how much time you put into it. I've seen you there at the meetings. But 2,000, when some of our people can't even feed their children, that's what bothers me. And no place for them to sleep, because they're maybe four, five, or 10, like I was told, in a room. Come on, we need to. We're not Sacramento.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Here I am again. Like everybody's saying, I'm not against anybody getting a raise, okay? But I think the person that would be able to tell us more exactly where we're at is our finance director. I mean, if we have the money, okay? All the plans that the city has as far as repairs, safety for our department, you know, police department, everything, if you've got the money for that, and whatever's left, go ahead and spread it amongst you guys. Thank you.
Hi, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and city council. You know, it's nice to get a raise, but that's a big jump. And what you need to prioritize? Police department, our streets, you know, all that before. And some of you guys need to prove yourselves, and you know who you are. So please, you know, don't, don't do that. Have respect. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
I'm here, city council people. I'm just going to repeat what everybody else has said. A raise is good. I would like a raise too. And the only thing that I can say is that I've met with you guys in different meetings and different occasions, and what I've heard from everybody was, I'm not in it for the money. I'm in it for serving our community. And I think that's great. So some of you guys have a full-time job. That's great, too. I applaud that. But I take into consideration what McShane said, which makes a lot of sense to me, and I expose it back to you. If you're trying to lure people for money, I see a bad outcome on that. So take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hi. Good evening. I'm a longtime resident of Salinas, and I just feel that the money should be redirected before you give yourself raises. I'm not saying you shouldn't. You guys all work hard. But we have a problem in Salinas. We are, don't have enough officers to protect our city. We can't get people to come. You, as a council members, don't make it enticing for them to come to Salinas. And I kind of agree with everybody else who's been saying, you know, we need to take care of our city and make it safe and entice them to come here. You know, before, they were the highest paying, and now they're the lowest, lowest in King City. So I think that's a huge problem. So I feel like the money should be redirected to our police department. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wish to comment on this item? All right, seeing none, I will go to Zoom. Any members on Zoom wish to comment on this item? If so, please use the hand, the raise hand function. All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public comment, and no action on this item. We'll go to council members for final comment. Councilmember Osorio.
Yes, and thank you to our city attorney for finding this update from the state of California. And obviously, it's, there's no doubt that when the minimum wage in 1984 was $3.50, if it would never have been raised from, until now in 2024, you would see a really big percentage increase. Even though it was $3.50 in 1984, the reason minimum wage goes up is because of the cost of living. It's now $17 an hour. I just wanted to say thank you to all of the community members that came out here and voiced their opinions. We really appreciate the feedback.
Councilmember Barrera.
Yes, thank you for the feedback. I mean, we work for everybody, and all opinions are welcome because we work for the entire city of Salinas. Where I do appreciate Chief Feliz, you have a lot of support from our constituency on we need to improve your department with more staff, which is, is great, and we, I concur. I think we have to look at different ways of how to be able to do that. But just, just so folks will know, I encourage you as well, because many of you said that it's working for the public. Councilmember De La Rosa said it's transparency. I would like you to do a ride along with me one day as a council member, and I mean this sincerely, just so you'll know, whether it's more money, less money, it doesn't matter. But just so you'll know the amount of work that we do, and for my colleagues, some of them are involved in more committees and commissions, depending on their, their workplace. The only reason I can be on the city council is because I have a generous supervisor that allows me to come to these meetings. But where I work, and I've been here for a while, so this is not a complaint, this is just the real, I have to make up my time at work when I'm here. And I do it all the time with, because I know what the rules are. I enjoy working for all of you, where I'm trying to encourage others as well. And we all have full-time jobs. But there are people, and you may be one of them, sometimes you look at, I would love to run for public office, but it just doesn't pay. And however you look at it, it's a great thing, but we'll know January 9th. And for those of you that want to be transparent, spread the word. I mean, we're going to vote on it, however direction it goes. But thank you for being involved. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Sandoval, final comments.
I remember five years, I think it was five years ago, when I decided to run for city council the first time, and I had a meeting with the mayor, and she shared one of her priorities for being in office was to get council compensation, and compensation for the mayor. And I thought to myself, what? Like, you're here to serve the public. And so then reality hit, and then the time dedication hit. And now I understand why. I remember the second time I ran for office, and I had to have a conversation with my wife and my boss to see if it was even possible, because we, you know, a council, you sacrifice a lot of time with your family, but more than that, you have to have a really flexible job. If you look at this council, you have people who are in business, people who have worked for nonprofits or just different agencies. Before, the compensation of the council used to be retired folks, business owners. So what that does is it limits the diversity of this council. And I want to be honest, I know some of my colleagues on here have been here a long time. I'm frustrated, too. Our roads are ridiculous. Our potholes are ridiculous. The shortage in our police department is ridiculous. The funding is, but this is not a problem that was created by this council. We're doing a lot of proactive things to address some of these things. Six months ago, the city council approved incentives for the police department because we recognize that there is, it's hard to hire police officers for a lot of different reasons. So for me, as a council member, I also feel that same frustration. That's why I ran for office, because I'm like, this is crazy. Like, we cannot do the same thing over and over. But if we have the same people, no disrespect to all of you who've been here a long time, the same people here all the time, because they're the ones who may be financially able to hold this seat, nothing's going to change. So, you know, this is, it's an awkward conversation. You hear the council member McShane, 400%. Yeah, I, just so you know, I'm 40 years old. That means that this compensation has not changed since there. We do need diversity on this council, so I'm in full support of this. You know, not just for this council, but for councils in the future. Otherwise, you're going to have the same people here, and nothing's going to change.
Councilmember Rocha.
I understand a lot of the community concerns, and they're valid. I would support having a community meeting to talk about this. I've actually received phone calls from my constituents who told me that they're more than happy for their council members to receive compensation that's adequate to the work you do. The truth is, should this be approved, it would be $25 an hour for 25 hours a week, which is $30,000 a year. I think that's a reasonable compensation for a city council position when I have 27,000 bosses, which are my constituents. And with the future growth there, you're going to have about 40,000 residents that are going to probably come to the city of Salinas in the next 10 to 15 years, and that's going to move up each council member's districts probably to like 33,000 a year. I think that's a reasonable salary to have. What I'll say is, I would, and I did advocate for this last time, support the removal of the car allowance. I think if you're changing the council compensation to be 30,000 a year, that is I think if you're changing the council compensation to be 30,000 a year, that is enough and does not require the $700 a month car allowance. So I think that that'd be reasonable to remove that. Just to give you an idea of some of the challenges that are presented in the role of a council position, I'm on one board to where every third Thursday of the month, I have to go to the city of San City for a meeting from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM. So I have to take time off work to do that, to go to that meeting. And that's really more like three hours, because I have to get 30 minutes to get there, 30 minutes to come back. And so I'm in a position to, I'm a 24-year-old, single person with no children. So for me, I could afford to do these kinds of things, but if you're a young parent and you have to pay childcare, you're not as easily able to cut back on your salary to make up for these kinds of committee appointments. I think that that's really important to acknowledge, that what we're trying to do here is make it so that the city council position is not one that's just going to go to a retired person, a wealthy person, or a self-employed business owner, but rather one that is able to be more reflective of the community that we are. And we're a diverse, younger community. I would also say that I do support having a different compensation for the mayor than the council, and the reason I bring that up is that it's a matter of gender pay equity. I think it's no secret that the mayor and I don't see eye to eye on a lot of issues. We're a very different policy standpoint. But that doesn't mean that I'm going to hold that against her when we're having a discussion on gender pay equity. The truth is, the mayor is one of the few women mayors in the county, and she's one of the few women mayors of a city of over 100,000 people. And if we are a city that wants to be true to our progressive values, that means that that is reflected in our policies and practices. And so I do think the mayor should have a different compensation than the council. When we took the vote last time, the way it came down was the two members of the council that supported the difference in compensation, two of them were members of the LGBTQIA+ community, and two were women. And I think that that's an important thing to point out. I mean, when we're having these discussions to my male colleagues in the room, I'd ask you to be sensitive to those issues of gender pay equity, and I think it's fair for the mayor to have a different compensation. On the discussion of making this a more diverse position for the community, Councilmember McShane, no tea, no shade, but the truth is, you're the only member of this council that voted no, and you're the only self-employed member of this council. So it's easy to bring up these dramatic quotes of how different the amount is going to be for council's compensation, but the truth is, this is a council that is majority people of color, and you have a very diverse council, and you're the only one that voted no. And I think that that's important to point out, because I don't appreciate the way the discussion was framed, to where it seemed like it was a self-enriching vote, and that wasn't the case. We're just trying to bring this position into the 21st century and make it so that more people can serve in these positions. And so with that, I would support a community meeting, because I know where I stand on this issue, and I'd be more than willing to face the community and say, this is my view on it, and I'd love to hear your feedback. I think that is transparent government. And with that being said, those are all my comments.
Councilmember McShane.
Yeah, what a great discussion. I'm keeping an open mind, and I've done my best to do so. And it is an awkward conversation to Councilmember Sandoval. Got to leave it to the biggest city along the central coast to take on the tough issues. For members of the public that haven't read the staff report, I think it's interesting, it's important, the legislation, the background, the other cities, and the other cities that might follow our action in all of this. So I think that's, that's important. So this council is bringing this forward. We can't point the finger at the legislation coming out of Sacramento. This council is considering voting itself a pay raise. And I think there's no, there's no secret, in my opinion. I think it's public service. There's a lot of volunteer work that I do, and I know there's a lot of volunteer work in this community. It could be a church, it could be a major event, like the Rodeo or the airshow. I just, on principle, I worry about cash being a motivator for public service. And so I'm just, I'm having to wrangle with that and get over it. Some other observations, I think this is too large a percent. I don't know what it amounts to, but it's around 400%. I think that's it. I could be off a little bit, maybe whether it be under or over. We also have to take into consideration that we're offered full benefits, which we don't have to pay much for, and that includes the whole family. That's pretty good, not to mention the public employees' retirement system that we earn into. So there's a fully loaded cost here that you can look up online if you're so motivated. We'll talk about this more on January 9th, and maybe by then, there'll be more public input, and we'll come up with something that's, that's right. Appreciate the conversation and look forward to more of it. Thanks.
Just final comments on my end. It's been a goal of mine, even when I was on council, to readdress the job description of what a city council member is and what a mayor is. There's really no solid job description. You can show up at 4:00 PM on Tuesdays and not go to any of the many, many, many subcommittee meetings that are included, and get paid the same amount of money as the other six on the dais. I would share with you that the city's charter, the rules that the city goes by, says that we must follow state law when it comes to council compensation. The state law has changed and been updated, and it's now incumbent upon us to follow that state law. It's, the state law is not, hey, pick a number, any number. It says between this population and this population, I think for us, it's between 150 and 250,000, you may receive compensation up to $2,550. The conversation we had in the previous council meeting, the will of this council is to have all seven council members, mayor included, paid at that maximum amount. It's not ideal, you know, part of policymaking. I had wanted a job description and term limits to discuss, and maybe that's a conversation greater and bigger for another time. But the reality is, the state law has changed, and the city's charter follows state law. And so with that, I'm certainly supportive of bringing it forward. I would note, even people who are self-employed struggle with being able to pay the bills. And having been self-employed for the first 13 years of, or actually, I should say, for the first eight years that I was on council, it was a real struggle. It's a, it's an up and down, you know, in whatever industry you're in. And the time commitment arguably impeded on the success of me being a small business owner and self-employed. So with that, I would say it's really important to make sure that we are bringing people forward who have the financial wherewithal through a council compensation to be able to even hire a babysitter for a seven-hour meeting on a Tuesday night. I very much appreciate the comments of my colleague, Councilmember Rocha. Yeah, I'm the number two female in 150 years, and that is not by accident, if I may. It's a lot of time to be the mayor of this city, whether it's me or my successors afterwards. It is a lot of time. And identifying that and being able to manage that with full-time employment is remarkable. I work seven days a week, and it's not about me, it's about the functionality of making sure that you have good governance and people who can toggle their time to be able to do that. $800 in 1984, I made the comment earlier, 800 bucks in 1984 was a mortgage payment. Not now. So, you know, acknowledging that, I would just say that I do think, and I know that it's not the will of the council from the previous conversations, so I'm not fighting tooth and nail on this, but I do think the mayor should be paid at a different level. I have volunteered that I would not accept that. That could be the successor for whomever becomes mayor after me. That would start at that point. But I would just acknowledge with this council and with the general public, being the mayor of a city that's five times the size of the city of Monterey is a remarkable job. I'm honored to do it, but it's also time-consuming. And that is part of the conversation that we need to have a very real conversation about with compensation. That being said, no action. I know we all needed to get that off of our chest, myself included, so thank you very much. We will deem this report received. Onto the meat and potatoes of tonight. That was a joke, sorry. Bringing a little levity to a meeting. Salinas City Council consent, we have 20 items on consent. I will start down the list. Councilmember Osornio.
Madam Mayor, I know I'm going to be pulling a couple of items here. I will just be pulling them for a separate vote, so please don't get scared here. ID 23-700, 701, 718, 727, 728, and 729.
Oh dude, all right.
I'll be brief.
Councilmember Barrera.
Yes, I want to... Madam Mayor, I don't want to be redundant here, but I notice if I don't pull the items myself, I can't get into the discussion, huh?
Correct.
Yeah, so I want, so I want to go through all the numbers, I want to pull what he just said.
Okay.
And also, the other one, 715?
Councilmember, to be clear, Barrera, to be clear, you want to pull all one, two, three, four, five, six items that Councilmember Osornio pulled?
And the reason I want to do that, because I want to be part of the discussion.
Understood, okay.
Yes. And then one of, the one, I got a good education on, I want to discuss 726 as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilmember Sandoval.
Councilmember Barrera brought up a good point, and I'll just be brief. As we talked about what items to pull, I will also pull, I think the way we do consent is very inefficient. And so, you know, I think in the, in the future, we will address that. In order to preserve my rights to speak on the items, I'll also pull all those items, including 675.
Okay. On, do you want to pull 715 as well?
Everything that was listed, just.
It's different between Councilmember Osornio and Councilmember Barrera?
Yes.
Okay.
What number was that? Sorry, 715.
Councilmember Rocha.
I'm sorry, I'm going to be a little annoying today, but more than usual. So I'm going to pull 675, 701, 717, 718, 728, 729, and 732.
Okay. Councilmember McShane.
Yeah, 727, 728.
Okay, hold please, wait a second. So 727, you said?
Yeah.
Okay, and?
728.
Yep.
And 729.
Understood, okay. And I may reserve comment for 727. So we'll go out to the public, does any member of the public wish to comment on any items on consent? Yes?
732.
Okay. And on Zoom, does any member on Zoom wish to pull an item on consent? If so, please use the raise hand function. All right, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion for the remaining items.
Motion to approve.
Okay, motion made by Councilmember Osornio, seconded by Councilmember Sandoval on 710, 750, 697, 711, 713, 716, 719, and 724. Oh, and 746, which was hiding on the backside, sorry about that. Thank you. Call for the vote, please.
Councilmember Barrera?
Yes.
Councilmember McShane?
Yeah.
Councilmember Osornio?
Yes.
Councilmember Rocha?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Yes.
Mayor Craig?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, ID 675, Councilmember Sandoval, you've pulled this item?
Yeah, I just want to ask about, once we open this up for bid, is there, is a timeline going to be in that city sidewalk project as far as when the contractor is required to complete the project?
Correct. So all projects, when we go out to bid, already specify the number of working days that the contractor must complete the project.
Okay, and what is the, is there a penalty, or what is, what happens when they're backed up on their schedule that they committed to?
There is a penalty associated, again, that is all spelled out in the, in the project specifications, so part of the contract of the contractor signs too.
Okay.
There are, if I can add, there are also, you know, there are days that we grant the contractors, say there's delays because of weather. So there are certain, there are certain days that are granted to the contractor in addition to the working days because of weather delays or, you know, supply or different items. So we do review, there is a schedule, but we do review and allow the contractor some leeway.
Okay, thank you, yeah, I just, I just want, I'm hopeful that this, that when we do open the bids, that we'll be close to estimates. My concern, that I'd like to share with the councils, if we do come back and the bids are substantially more than we anticipate, I just, my fear is that whatever that comes, any further delays are going to be like our other projects, just going to keep increasing in cost. So I'm happy to move the item with those numbers.
Councilmember Rocha, sorry, motion made by Councilmember Sandoval, seconded by Councilmember Barrera. Councilmember Rocha, you also pulled this item?
Yes. Adriana, sorry, you already sat down, I apologize. My question was, is, were these streets part of the excess funds that were left over from the prior bid? Or where did the funding for these particular sidewalk repairs come from?
Well, it's both ARPA and the annual budget.
Okay.
So we made the request in the annual budget, and there was also the ARPA funds that got split up.
And I just wanted to clarify, to make sure I'm reading this correctly, for District 6, the sidewalks that can be repaired are Pennsylvania Drive between Dartmouth and McKinnon Street, and Delancey Drive between Hardin Parkway and Baronda Drive, or Broadway Drive, I'm sorry.
Correct.
Thank you, thank you so much, I really appreciate that. When I was city manager and the Public Works Director and looked at those streets, and they were really in need of repair, and the residents are rightfully upset about that. You did mention it to Councilmember Sandoval, but didn't quite catch it all. Do you have an expected timeline of when the construction will start, guesstimate?
Well, we don't, we don't get the schedule until after the award is issued to the contractor.
How, how far out do you think the award of the bid will take?
So we're anticipating award late January, early February.
Okay. Those are all my questions, thank you so much for all of your hard work on this, I appreciate it.
Call for the vote on 675, please.
Councilmember Barrera?
Yes.
Councilmember McShane?
Yeah.
Councilmember Osornio?
Yes.
Councilmember Rocha?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Yes.
Mayor Craig?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, the next several items, we have several council members on comment, but Councilmember Osornio, do you have comment, or you just pulled the item for a separate vote?
I'm just going to brief comment and then make a motion.
Okay.
So for the Miracle Playground, I just wanted to continue to thank city staff. I know that with, there's been money that has been allocated to do the repairs for the playgrounds. And there was a point where there was a lot of, there was a lot of repairs being done to the, to the playgrounds, but then I believe it kind of stopped for a little bit. I just, I just wanted to say that I'm glad to see this back on the agenda, and we're getting, we're making sure we're getting back on track with that. The, the other money that was allocated from American Rescue Plan money was the wood chips, or the fiber, the wood fiber, that got filled, and that was great, seeing that, that was, that was pretty quick. But just wanted to say thank you for continuing the charge on making sure that these, these playgrounds are getting better, and I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
In unison, Councilmember Osornio made a motion, seconded by Councilmember Sandoval. Councilmember Barrera, you also pulled this item?
Yes, Dero, I just wanted to be part of the discussion, so I like progress.
Awesome, thank you. Councilmember Sandoval.
Yeah, I'd just like to thank our staff and Councilmember Osornio for his continuing, continuing advocacy for our parks in the city of Salinas.
Excellent. Call for the vote on 700, please.
Councilmember Barrera?
Yes.
Councilmember McShane?
Yeah.
Councilmember Osornio?
Yes.
Councilmember Osornio?
Yes.
Councilmember Rocha?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Yes.
Mayor Craig?
Yep.
Motion passes.
Excellent. 701, Councilmember Osornio, you pulled this for a separate vote. Do you have a comment?
Yes, I'd just like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Motion made by Councilmember Osornio, seconded by Councilmember Sandoval. We'll go on to Councilmember Barrera for comment.
Get on your mark. I want to third it. Yes. Thank you.
Councilmember Sandoval. Councilmember Rocha?
Yes, I have one question, clarifying question. So, we allocated $500,000 from the American Rescue Plan Affordable Housing Production Fund. This is an additional $500,000 from the HCD Pro Housing Pilot Program, correct?
No.
Oh. Tell me what I did wrong.
It's an allocation of our Pro Housing Incentive Program funding to support predevelopment. It could also come from American Rescue Plan Act funds. We have a variety of predevelopment funds that are available.
I thought we set aside $500,000 already from the ARPA plan.
Not to this particular project. This is the project on 467 and 479 Market Street.
Oh.
And we have not yet. And this is contingent funding that requires the developer to also receive or make up the balance before we will actually enter into an agreement.
Do you think $500,000 will be enough to get this project moving forward?
Well, it's certainly a start, and it's been our precedent and our practice to do this with developers. You know, when you're in predevelopment and starting on development, you have a lot of contingencies, and a lot of things can fall through the cracks that could create the project from being either being delayed or moving out. And so, it's a matter of risk. And so, what we have traditionally done is offered up this amount, and it typically has moved projects forward in a reasonable amount of time. And the developer does have the ability to come back to us later on and request additional funding as the project moves forward, or if they should experience a gap, we can bring something back to council.
You know, I got this confused with the project on East Laurel, but this is 100% affordable multifamily housing. Can you remind me how many units this is?
This is 75 units. It's been through a lot of design changes. This project originally came forward as a not 100% affordable project, and the developer's been very progressive in bringing it forward as 100% project.
Do you know what the amounts of affordability are going to be at the different range levels? Is it like 50%?
I don't know offhand, but in general, it'll be very 80% AMI and below.
But 100% affordable housing?
Yes, 100% affordable.
I'm very excited. I'm happy it turned into 100% affordable housing project, and very happy to support this. Thank you for all of your hard work.
All right. Call for the vote on 701, please.
Councilmember Barrera?
Yes.
Councilmember McShane?
Yeah.
Councilmember Osornio?
Yes.
Councilmember Rocha?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Yes.
Mayor Craig?
Yep.
Motion passes.
Excellent. 715, Councilmember Barrera, you pulled this item?
Yes. I wanted to find out... Is this for Chief Clement? Chief Clement, I understand there's already folks from Chavinda, Michoacan, that are going to be able to take these units as well. Can you let us know just a little bit of how this program is working?
Sure. This is a long-time practice that we've had with other cities in Mexico. Typically, these requests come through ties here in the community. The Chavinda requests and the other Rio... San Luis Rio, Colorado Sonora request came through as separate letters. And one of our retired firefighters and former commissioners here, Cosme Padilla, has been facilitating these over several years, being able to make those connections with those communities.
And thank you for that, Chief. And I do want to acknowledge the good work of Cosme Padilla on this, the success that he's had to be able to motivate other communities in Mexico. And I want to thank him for his work. I really appreciate that. And to Representative of Chavinda, Michoacan...
Go ahead.
Okay. If you don't mind one moment, Mr. Padilla, I'm going to allow the council member to finish his comments.
Thank you. And I think the work that your department has been doing for several years now has really helped a lot of communities in Mexico. So, thank you.
Mr. Padilla, I'm out of my normal way of running consent, but I'll give you the floor for just a moment. Go ahead.
And I thank you for my time to talk to Adam Mayor and the rest of the city council. I'm going to be thanking you for the ninth time. This is the ninth unit you have donated to Mexico, going back to about 2001. So, it's been a lot. And as far as I know, maybe about five units are still in service. These two units are going to Mexico, or newer. Hopefully, they have a longer life. And on behalf of Chavinda and Sonora, I thank you.
Thank you. All right. Councilmember Sandoval, you also pulled this item?
Yeah. Fire Chief, thank you for your work on this. And to Cosme Padilla and the Padilla family, thank you for this much-needed advocacy and partnership with the different cities.
Second.
All right. Motion made by Councilmember Barrera, seconded by Councilmember Osornio. Call for the vote on 715, please.
Councilmember Barrera?
Yes.
Councilmember McShane?
Yeah.
Councilmember Osornio?
Yes.
Councilmember Rocha?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Yes.
Mayor Craig?
Yes.
Motion pass.
Okay. ID 717, Councilmember Rocha, you pulled this item?
This is a memorandum of understanding with the County of Monterey for the Mobile Crisis Unit, correct? Yes. I just wanted to take a moment to commend you, the team. I believe you are from the County of Monterey, correct? Thank you for staying to the end of the meeting. That's one of the main reasons I pulled the item. But thank you all for your collaboration. Thank you for all of your hard work on this. Do you have any idea of when we might see this project up and running?
So, under the mandate, the county is going to be launching this December 31st is essentially when it comes into being. But Melanie and John are here from Behavioral Health and can get specific, if you like. Go ahead.
Sure. Thank you. Our intent is to launch this alongside our countywide program, which we have an implementation plan with a proposed launch date of December 31st. So, that is our target.
Thank you so much. I'll move the item for approval.
Second.
Okay. Motion made by Councilmember Rocha, seconded by Councilmember Osornio. Call for the vote on 717, please.
Councilmember Barrera?
Yes.
Councilmember McShane?
Yeah.
Councilmember Osornio?
Yes.
Councilmember Rocha?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Yes.
Mayor Craig?
Yes.
Motion pass.
Okay. Councilmember Osornio, you pulled 718 for a separate vote. Do you have a comment?
Yes, a brief comment. Just wanted to show my support for Rainier Drive. Really, just wanted to give a shout out to Councilmember Rocha. I remember that call that you gave me, and you said, you know, we got to get out there and go to the community meeting. So, we were able to partner up and go to that community meeting, speak with the residents that were there, and then also go and door knock about two or three times. So, again, just talking about the time that it takes to be a council member. I remember being out there, and it was nighttime, and people were wondering, what the heck are you guys doing at our doors this late? But it was just another testament to working in collaboration with this council to be able to make sure that we're doing work to improve the neighborhood. So, I just wanted to pull the item to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Motion made by Councilmember Osornio, seconded by Councilmember Rocha. Councilmember Barrera, you also pulled this item?
Yes, Dido.
Okay. Councilmember Sandoval.
Well, I want to thank and commend the community members who brought this petition forward. One of my goals in the future is to streamline this process, because there's a lot of... It's just a long process that I think could be streamlined. So, good job, council members.
Councilmember Rocha, you also pulled this item?
Yes. Would it be possible to get a timeline of when they'll be installed?
So, implementation of them really is dependent on our availability of our maintenance staff. We asked, you know, there's... We actually identified two-line item budgets. So, if we want to get it done faster, we go with our contractor, which was going to cost us significantly more. If we want to get it cheaper, we go with our staff, which we basically have to get in line and try to persuade them to do some overtime for us to do the installs.
Do you have any idea of which route you're going to pursue?
We typically start with our internal staff.
Okay. I want to thank your staff for their work on this. We were able to work with them very closely, and they did a great job facilitating the community meetings. You were there as well. Very passionate feedback. Thank you for all your help on this. Thank you to Councilmember Osornio for going door-to-door with me. And it was, as we see from 93% vote, you know, voted in favor of this. It was very much, you know, needed and openly embraced there. So, very happy to support it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. With that, call for the vote on 718, please.
Councilmember Barrera?
Yes.
Councilmember McShane?
Yeah.
Councilmember Osornio?
Yes.
Councilmember Rocha?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Yes.
Mayor Craig?
Yes.
Motion pass.
Okay. ID 726, Councilmember Barrera, you pulled this item?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to... You know, it's a very costly job, but can you just share with us... I know a lot of times when we're dealing with the sewage system is when everything is going wrong in the city. But when I was at a training a couple of weeks ago with the city, I met with two young men that work in this department. And sometimes it's very difficult to hire people within this department. Can you just share with us the importance of this? Because when we do talk about sewers, it's when there's problems in the city.
Correct. And this is a critical first step. So, what this... What we're doing here is it's basically a video to assess the condition of our sewers. There's a number of sewers that we know that we have problems with. They're very, you know... They are very susceptible to damage. So, we really need to take a look at the... Visually, look at the condition of them and where we need to do repairs. So, this is the first step. Next step will be to come forward with repairs that we need to do for those.
Thank you.
To approve. Second.
Okay. Motion made by Councilmember Barrera, seconded by Councilmember Osornio. Councilmember Sandoval, you also pulled this item?
Yeah, I have no questions, but I want to commend you for your proactive approach. You know, I want to also thank the staff that works in our sanitary sewer. I'm sure, you know, it's... They're not very visible, and it's underappreciated, and it's a dirty job. But, sorry, folks, but I'm excited that we're doing this, and I'm also a little scared of the results that we may see, which I think our staff has already shared some of their concerns. But it's an important investment for Salinas, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll call for the vote on 726, please.
Councilmember Barrera?
Yes.
Councilmember McShane?
Yeah.
Councilmember Osornio?
Yes.
Councilmember Rocha?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Yes.
Mayor Craig?
Yes.
Motion pass.
Okay. ID 727, Shot Spotter Gunfire Location. Councilmember Osornio, you pulled it for a separate vote. Do you wish to comment?
Yes. I just want to hear about the way that it's utilized. We've spoken about this, you know, quite some... I mean, every year, I believe, we're talking about it. But just wanting to know, still good investment, and how lately has it been contributing to solving crimes here in Salinas?
Certainly. Thank you for the question, and certainly a great investment. And, yeah, we need to continue going with it. It provides us, obviously, with data, but more important, it provides us with immediate response to the shooting. Just to give you an example, very unfortunate, over the weekend, we had a homicide, as you all have read about. The Shot Spotter activated. We immediately got dispatched to the location. When we got there, the gentleman was still alive. And thanks to that, we were able to get into the hospital. Unfortunately, succumbed to his injuries, but he's still at a pulse when we got there. The first phone call that we got after the Shot Spotter activation was three minutes. So, three minutes later, somebody called 911, actually several people called 911, and eventually, we got dispatched. So, you can imagine, in that particular situation, three minutes, it's a lifetime. And so, that's just to give an example. I can give you many, many more.
Thank you for that example, and investing in technology. And again, just like we were talking before, this is one tool inside of our tool belt to be able to be more efficient in getting to those crime scenes a lot faster. And I haven't understood that being able to invest into the Shot Spotter with other investments in technology will just make it a lot more rounded. So, I just wanted to show my support for the Shot Spotter and make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Motion made by Councilmember Osornio, seconded by Councilmember Sandoval. Councilmember Barrera, you also pulled this item?
Yes. Chief Felician, the reason I pulled this item was because I just wanted to let the public know, sometimes they may feel that this council doesn't support your department. But I think with the Shot Spotter and everything else that you've been asking us for to increase your effectiveness in your department, I think this council has worked well with you.
You have been very supportive when it comes to our technology and advancing our technology. I'd say we're definitely one of the most advanced police departments in Monterey County, without a doubt. I don't want to say in the state, because I don't go up and down the state, other than technologies, but within Monterey County, we're definitely one of the most advanced police departments. So, thank you.
Good. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Sandoval, you pulled this item?
Yeah. Yeah, thank you, Chief. Like my council colleague said, thank you for always looking for those innovative ways, especially around technology to make our officers, you know, have the additional tools. Not only our officers, like you stated, our residents, this thing could save lives, as well as it helps us solve crimes. So, I just want to commend you. And this is like Councilmember Barrera said, it's just another show that our council is serious about investing in public safety. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember McShane, you also pulled this item?
Yeah, just so supportive of our longstanding commitment to this technology. When you talk to staff about the ability to be notified minutes, sometimes many minutes, prior to dispatch, as to where there's been gunfire, I mean, this is the difference between life and death. So, this is just such a no-brainer and happy to support it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll just, I pulled this item for comment. I'll just acknowledge that several conversations with councilmembers over in Seaside who had questions about Shot Spotter, they have recently, I think, taken that on in their own community. And so, realizing the staggering statistics that were coming out of Salinas in terms of what and how it was being used, that council overwhelmingly supported that technology as well. So, all good, all around. So, with that, call for the vote on 727, please.
Councilmember Barrera?
Yes.
Councilmember McShane?
Yep.
Councilmember Osornio?
Yes.
Councilmember Rocha?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Yes.
Mayor Craig?
Yep.
Motion passes.
Okay, 728, Councilmember Osornio, you pulled for a separate vote. Do you wish to comment?
I do, Madam Mayor, if I can briefly, just, again, just wanting to hear the great work of our Salinas Police Department utilizing technology. Can you just elaborate a little bit on the, on the item here?
Absolutely. So, these are flock cameras that we have utilized to solve many of our crimes. And just to give you a quick statistic, first of all, I want to commend my staff, from my detectives, to the patrol officer, to professional staff. And allow me to commend also our Police Service Administrator, Tonya Erickson, because she put a lot of these statistics that you see before you together. She did great work combining all of this in a way that makes sense to all of us. And just to give you a quick, maybe the best statistic that I can give you, we have utilized flock cameras to solve many of our crimes. Last year, as I shared with you before, we cleared 94% of our homicides, which is unheard of in the nation. The nation averages about 42%. We are definitely double the, and we have done, we have done that with the great work of our police officers, detectives, and professional staff, but also by utilizing this type of technology. And I can give you several examples. I know it's been a long night and you have those examples with you, but from going to 2022 to 2023, maybe even the latest one that we did was a young lady that was raped by a gentleman who put drugs in her, in her water. We had very little to work on. We were able to develop enough of a lead to identify the suspect. We didn't know where the suspect was, but because of the flock cameras, the suspect was hidden in the same location over and over. We set up in that location and eventually we caught him and he's now in jail.
And again, the reason I pulled this item is just for a separate vote, for a separate vote to show my support of continuing this course. And so, I just wanted to make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
Okay, motion made by Councilmember Osornio, seconded by Councilmember Sandoval. We'll go on for additional comments. Councilmember Barrera, you pulled this item?
And I'm also excited about staffing, you know, that some of these grant opportunities are bringing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rocha, you pulled this item?
Yes. Chief, I have a mixed bag of comments for you today. So, I appreciate the technology and what it's been able to accomplish. And I appreciate the administrative regulation we have in place pertaining to the use of this particular technology. As I've stated to you, and I've stated in this meeting several times, I wanted that to be a codified privacy ordinance, to make sure that the work that you all did was something that would be the law for this city. The city attorney has assured me that that privacy ordinance is going to come back to this, or is going to come to this council in February of this upcoming year. So, I look forward to that ordinance. And like I said, you know, I've given my word to people that that was going to be a big issue for me, the ordinance. And so, I look forward to being able to vote to adopt that and codify that and then support this technology moving forward. Today, I won't be, since we have not voted on the ordinance yet, but I see that ordinance coming forward very soon. So, thank you so much.
Councilmember McShane, you also pulled this item?
Yeah, Chief, maybe a question related to other cameras in the city. Ironically, I was contacted day before yesterday regarding an accident at the corner of Laurel and Natividad. Gentleman lives in South Salinas, was actually at Natividad Hospital, coming back, got into an accident. Two problems. One, there was not sufficient PD available at 9:30 on a Saturday night to come to the accident, which was just a mess for the intersection and very traumatic for the constituent, which is another issue. But ultimately, he couldn't get traffic footage from the, or camera, from the camera footage from the camera that's at the intersection. And as we dug deeper, it was determined that some cameras are more related to one application, other cameras are related to another. Can you just comment generally? Like, how can we enable our video surveillance to all work together and be better interoperable or available?
So, that's a two-part answer.
Yeah.
So, the first part is, yes, we're working towards that. As I have introduced additional technology to combine all these videos together, to facilitate exactly what you're asking for.
Sure.
The second part is really, we don't have cameras that give live stream. So, the cameras that you're referring to, those red light cameras, when people go through a red light, you get a short, a short coverage of the live stream. And what I mean by that is, you just see the violation of going through the red light.
I see.
And that's the end of it. So, it doesn't cover, you know, from intersection to intersection. So, none of our cameras do that. The only cameras that we have right now, they have live stream, are the downtown cameras. But that's the only ones that we have available.
Will these cameras allow for a live stream interface?
So, none of these cameras that you're looking at, the flock cameras that we implemented, no, they're now live cameras. They take frame-by-frame picture, and that's how we combine, you know, through, no, we, but flock through their operating system. They have artificial intelligence that allows us to figure out the plate, you know, based on the plate, the vehicle, and so forth and so on. But they're now live cameras.
So, I'm, there's no way to put a live camera in the box, so to speak?
No, we will have to, we will have to implement different form of cameras.
But this sort of question has come up before, I imagine, and the need for more of that sort of available footage, I would assume. I mean, this was a great point on behalf of--
Oh, absolutely. I mean, live cameras is great, but you also got to realize that with live cameras, you have to have the staff that's able to sit there and watch the cameras.
Yeah, I understand.
Right now, I barely have cops to respond to calls, for sure, because I don't even have to sit there and watch.
I see that, yeah. All right. Thank you, Chief. That's all.
You're welcome.
All right, well, Coach, so I, we've, I didn't have you pull the item, but I did allow Cosme Padilla to speak. So, go ahead and come forward. Just be a brief moment, please.
Very, very.
Thank you.
The, the video cameras at a lot of the new intersections, and they cost a bunch of money, unfortunately, will pick up bicycles. They're a lot better than the magnets. And they're, it's great technology, but it costs bucks. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second on 728. Please call for the vote.
Councilmember Barrera?
Yes.
Councilmember McShane?
Yeah.
Councilmember Osornio?
Yes.
Councilmember Rocha?
No.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Yes.
Mayor Craig?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, ID 729, the lease of license plate readers and PTZ cameras. Councilmember Osornio pulled it for a separate vote. Do you have a comment?
Yes, a quick comment. And I didn't, and I'm sorry for that, but I just wanted to make sure that I called out the creativeness between getting these grants to be able to pay for this and being able to use the grant money and not have to take it out of general fund. Not only are we thinking about getting creative with the technology to be able to protect the residents of Salinas, just because it's no secret, we do have staffing challenges. It is also great to know that you guys are going after so much grant money. I don't know how much grant money in the last 12 months, but I would imagine it's like in the tens of millions of dollars.
I can tell you that in the last 17 months, we, as a police department, were able to bring in over $6 million worth of grants.
Wow.
And I say, we, I say, I probably brought in $50,000. The rest, Tonya brought in all of it. So, I have to give kudos to her.
Well, I would just-- Thank you. I would, my comment would just be, continue the great work in applying for those grants. It, again, just voting on this and knowing it's not coming out of general fund, to continue to make sure that we have the money there in the police department allocated for when we can hire those police officers. Thank you for the creativeness. Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Councilmember Osornio, seconded by Councilmember Sandoval. Councilmember Barrera, you also pulled this item?
Yeah, Chief, and there's no doubt that, like you said in your reports, it's, it's been efficient. So, it's working. We want to be able to continue doing the good work. Hopefully, all this technology is helping your department, even though we, we are lacking in staff power. Hopefully, this is working out. And we do have to come to terms on how we can really support your department in all aspects. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Sandoval, you also pulled this item?
Yeah, I want to commend you for, for the grants you accept. Also, make a plug for possible next year to have more grant support for our different departments. I think as we look to increase revenue, I know some of the positions, like Tonya, that's probably maybe an additional task on top of her other things.
It is.
Yes, I see it, yes, from there. And so, I think if this council wants to be serious about tackling some of our issues across all our departments, including the police department, we need to support our staff with more grant writing support. So, I want to make a plug for that for next budget season. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Rocha, you also pulled this item?
Yes, thank you for looking for the grants. Definitely support technology in the department. I've supported the Shot Spotter. Happy to do so. As I mentioned, I have particular concerns with the license plate readers, but I suspect those will be resolved with the ordinance coming before us in February. So, but in the meantime, thank you.
Councilmember McShane?
Yeah, we'll just pile on to applaud your efforts, Chief, to go after grants, to seek technology in lieu of staffing. I guess it just begs the question, police staffing, you know, adequate staffing, once the grand dollars are gone, the technology's with us. Can you just comment on that? You know, we've heard tonight and recently, there was a story on KSBW yesterday as to, you know, how is our department keeping up? You know, and I think this is an opportunity for you to expand on that. I just would love to hear your take.
So, I can tell you, first of all, as I said before, I definitely want to commend my officers, my detectives, my professional staff, because, yes, it's true. They're tired. I can tell you. You can see in their faces every morning, every night, when they go in service, they're just simply tired. Many of them are working 15-hour days. Many of them are working on the days off because they're mandatory overtime. And they still show up and they give us the result that we see today. I mean, they're, they're doing a phenomenal job in solving crimes, because that's how dedicated they are. These are the Euro officers, dedicated to our community. They're not, they're not quitters. Yeah, they're tired, but they don't quit. So, but we have to do something to help them, because pretty much, I think they're each, like all of us, we're all human beings, we get to a point in which we just can't take it anymore. So, hence, we see people retiring, we see people unfortunately getting injured on duty, people moving to other agencies. We have to stop obleeding. To, Councilmember Sandoval earlier made a comment, very true, thank you for, you guys helped me with incentives for officers, to hire new officers. And we do have five, six in the, in the academy, but we also got to find a way to keep the officers that we have. Because if they walk out the door, we're back to square one and we're losing talented, talented officers. So, yes, the technology helps. And again, 95%, 94% homicide solvability rate, that's fantastic. But it comes at a price. Some of the prices that we have to tell my constituents, which breaks my heart as a chief, to tell my constituents, sorry, we're not coming to that call. We're simply not coming. That, that to me is unacceptable. But that's what we are at right now.
Thanks, Chief.
You're welcome.
Thank you. All right, with that, call for the vote, please.
Councilmember Barrera?
Yes.
Councilmember McShane?
Yes.
Councilmember Osornio?
Yes.
Councilmember Rocha?
No.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Yes.
Mayor Craig?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, ID 732, Councilmember Rocha, if you don't mind, I'll take, we have somebody, a member of the public that's--
I recuse myself.
Oh, all right. Well, then, before we get into it, I, just one brief moment, I'll allow Councilmember Rocha to the floor.
Yeah, I'm a recipient of services from the County of Monterey Housing Authority. I'm not a recipient of this particular program, but out of abundance of caution, I want to make sure I do not vote on anything pertaining to the housing authority. So, I will be recusing myself from this vote.
Okay. And with that, we will, if you'll just wait one brief moment, I'll allow Councilmember Rocha to leave the chambers. And you have pulled this item?
Oh, yes, okay. Okay, so, my name's Eloise Shem. And so, for the first time in my many years, I'm a senior, I get subsidy from the housing authority, which I waited 10 years. I applied for it 10 years ago and I finally got it. And I have to say that I'm grateful also to the United Way, because during the pandemic, my unemployment got frozen and then I had to get some money from the United Way to keep from being homeless. But anyway, be that as it may, the housing authority requires a lot of your personal information. So, just imagine that publicly, you give your social security number, your bank state, your bank account number, six bank statements, your address, and your age publicly. That's what you have to do to get this Section 8. And you don't only give it to them, but also to your manager, who has a parent manager, and then they have a nonprofit organization. So, I invite you to imagine that you just feel not safe in terms of having your identity stolen or whatever. And so, the fear for me is that having this United Way come to the city, that since they've raised my rent now in September, and I don't know if the housing authority is going to cover it, then I'm going to have to give all that information to the city. So, that's, I don't want to do it.
Thank you. All right, council, I'm seeking action on this item.
Motion to approve. Second.
A motion made by Councilmember Barrera, seconded by Councilmember Osornio. Call for the vote on 732, please.
Councilmember Barrera?
Yes.
Councilmember McShane?
Yes.
Councilmember Osornio?
Yes.
Councilmember Rocha, recused. Councilmember Sandoval?
Yes.
Mayor Craig?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. All right, we will go on to councilmember reports, appointments, and future agenda items. I will ask that we keep it succinct. Councilmember Osornio?
Thank you, Mayor. I will keep it succinct. I just wanted to give a huge shout-out to the Holiday Parade Lights. I was able to see a couple of folks that, out there. And just really, a great event to be able to participate in. It's the second year that we've gotten a chance to participate in it. My daughter loves to be able to, to help out in that. And I also just wanted to give a quick plug for all of the events, again, happening this weekend. There will be the Chambers Shopping Tour, there will be an Aztec Christmas Event on Saturday, I believe, the Saturday and the, and Sunday. Tatum's Garden will be having their grand reopening from the, from getting renovations done there. And I know that there's another event on that day, oh, the--
Christmas on the street.
Filipino Hall, Filipino Hall will be having their gala this, this Saturday as well. But obviously, you know, got to put a plug in there for Christmas in Closter Park. So, it's been some time now, being able to help out and organizing that event, which will be this Saturday and Sunday from 4:00 until about 8:00 on Sunday and 5:00 to 9:00 on Saturday. And I really just wanted to make sure that we thank all of the volunteers. Right now, we have over 300 volunteers. And that just goes to show that the trust and what we do there to be able to provide this to the community. Really wanted to thank the, the parents as well for, for trusting in us to be able to make this an event that their children go to. But also with everybody that was involved, with, with city staff. And I know that the other organizers have had really great interactions with city staff to get this, to get this planned. So, really just wanted to invite the community out to come and see Christmas at Closter Park this weekend. Thank you.
Councilmember Barrera?
Yes, and Madam Mayor, there's a lot of great things happening in our city. Hundreds, maybe thousands of volunteers putting things together. I want to thank Chief Clemmex Department. I know the, his fire engine, or fire engines are participating and they're trying to get Santa Claus throughout the whole, different Santa Claus. There are several Santa Clauses that are going throughout the city.
Helpers, helpers.
And you know what? The Firehouse Recreation Center, in, in the mayor's word, that place is a hoot. I mean, you know what? Imagine all these senior citizens volunteering, just supporting each other. It is phenomenal. It really is. And Santa Claus is also going to be at Closter Park next weekend. This Saturday, Sunday, we're having Christmas at Closter Park. The next Saturday at Closter Park, we will also be having an event, thanks to the Gomez family and several other volunteers. And the Firehouse Recreation Center is also having their, their Christmas event. And on Friday morning, Santa Claus is coming to visit city staff at the Recreation Center. Maybe the city manager will sit on Santa's lap. And so, we're going to have fun.
Oh, my gosh.
Thank you.
We'll have HR contact you. How about that? With that, we'll move on to Councilmember Sandoval for councilmember reports.
Yeah, no, a lot of good work. I'm hoping that some of those amazing volunteers that are going to be at Christmas in Closter Park or other places will join the District 5 Community Cleanup, which is coming up December 16th. So, dress warm. It's going to be at Santa Rita Park, a small but important park in District 5. I'd also like to thank Robin Lee and Ms. Bennett for helping collaborate that and collaborate on that. And thank you to Jessica from Neighborhood Services in Jose Riola for helping organize that. And as we discussed, and we were excited about traffic calming in the future, I'd like to see how we can streamline our traffic calming to be more efficient, you know, with our shortage in staff and the processes. So, if I can get somebody's-- Thank you, thank you. And just a follow-up from our Housing and Land Use Committee. We discussed bringing forward a City of Salinas-appointed-- discussed bringing forward a City of Salinas Appointed Permit Committee to help improve the permit center and facilitate improvements. So I want to just, and thank you, Councilmember Osornio, for supporting me on that request.
Councilmember Rocha?
Thank you. Just a few announcements. We have a traffic calming meeting tomorrow at 6:00 PM at John Stanbeck Elementary School for the Coventry Street Traffic Calming Project in that particular neighborhood of Thencreek Bridge. Hope to see everyone there. I have a Salinas Valley Recycles Executive Committee meeting on Thursday, and a Salinas Valley Recycle Strategic Planning Session on the 15th. It's a morning session. So very excited for that, looking forward to that morning session on Friday. We, I had a conversation with Councilmember Sandoval, and I would like to request that we establish a charter review committee to look at bringing forward some amendments to our charter for the ballot for this general election cycle. So if you'd like to make a point on that?
Yes.
I think there's a few things we need to clean up in the charter. So I'd like to see that committee created. And that's everything I have to report.
Councilmember McShane?
Yeah, joined Assistant Chief Manny Martinez this morning for breakfast, as he is on his way out. There was about 30 folks. It was a terrific opportunity to honor him. Character and legacy, those are the two ways I would describe him and described him when I was able to honor him. Brought poinsettias. Please take them home. Or give them to a friend if you're worried about a pet danger or whatever else. Hey, it's Christmas. I just want to say, here's to the season, peace and joy, as this is our last opportunity to meet as a council. Had a bit of time today to visit with 30 pastors in town, and a pastor's council is assembling. There's some really great things in the works, including a mayor's prayer breakfast and a giant Fourth of July celebration that's gotten a nod from the rodeo and the sports complex. So Osornio, can't wait to see you and your Fourth of July spirit as that event's taking shape. Children's shopping tour, I'll be there. I think the mayor will be there most likely. And we invite other council members to join at 7:00 AM at Northridge Mall. That's just going to be great. 400 children shopping for essentials. Tree lighting the rodeo did was incredible. I've been to three tree lightings in the last four days, five days. You know, the one in Monterey the very next night, and I would say ours was more impressive because 3,000, 3,000 people showed up for it. There was Champorado and Letters to Santa and Santa and all this other stuff. It was incredible. To the rodeo, thank you. Oh, and there's some terrific deals at Viarta. I don't know if anybody has seen the circular in the Salinas Californian, but I'm not joking. There's some really nice deals. I'll share this with the council members. But whether it's tilapia, guacamole, or carne asada, I've been in there, and it's just terrific. And they're really doing great things. We're so lucky to have them. The Holiday Home Lighting Challenge is on, and I will publicly say to the reigning champion, Mr. Rocha, there will be one winner, and there will be other honorees, two of them. So the bus is booked, and it's going to happen. So please, council members, if you could support and provide three nominated homes to J.C., that'd be great. Hartnell College this Saturday, the 16th, The Pops, which is a 40-piece orchestra, along with the Hartnell Choir, 7:30 PM, 16th. Lots of good stuff. Hey, here's to a Happy New Year and a Merry Christmas to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, a couple updates. I attended the Viarta Supermarket Grand Opening. Pretty remarkable store, if you have not been there. It is in the old Kmart. Very much appreciate fellow council members, Osornio, Barrera, and Sandoval, who also attended day of. Monterey One Water, a really heavy meeting this past, I think it was November 27th. Unfortunately, I can't talk about it. We bumped all of our closed session to that 27th meeting, so the first two hours, I think, were closed session items. I met with Big Sur Land Trust. Jeanette over there gave me an update on their intents with Car Lake. Really had a really good conversation. Asked that she keep both me and the council and staff apprised of their plans as it moves towards success. I attended the First Armory Grand Opening. This is Brian Finnegan's former office, law office. He acquired it in 1978. They've done incredible work to restore the building back to what it was. Just for a little bit of context, it's the building that's on the corner of Monterey and West Alacel. Oh, I'm sorry, Salinas and West Alacel. I apologize, getting my streets mixed up. But they've made it ADA compliant. It's now, there are now multiple offices available for rent. And it's just, that building is beautiful. They used to have horse parking on Salinas Street. So, yeah, pretty remarkable. Also spoke with the kids, sorry, the young adults in the Youth Creative Intern Program that Sophia's put together. Some really dynamic young people who are helping with our social media. And they took on Small Business Saturday on a Tuesday for the Saturday event, if I remember correctly. And they also are helping promote the Holiday Home Lighting Tour, which I think is pretty, pretty great. Also, I attended the sentencing of the man found guilty of J.D. Alvarado's murder. It was a very emotional time. There were 10 officers from Colma Police Department. The chambers were filled with Salinas employees, not just within Salinas Police Department, but Salinas employees and also his family. Very emotional, but very grateful that justice was served. I attended the Boys and Girls Club Alumni Event, where they honored Donna Ferraro for her 20 years of service to the Boys and Girls Club. For those of you that don't know or don't have the historical perspective, Donna Ferraro was the executive director that essentially expanded services into Salinas and helped build that gorgeous facility. So went to the Parade of Lights. Very much appreciate the volunteers behind that. I know it's a heavy lift every year. LAFCO, I just need to acknowledge Lisa Brinton is a champion in leading a Salinas Valley Cities effort to have meaningful dialogue with the county and with the Local Agency Formation Commission on ag mitigation, meaning areas of interest in growth and meeting our housing needs. It's been a very complicated conversation, and we had a very extensive multi-meeting workshop on what LAFCO's policies are around. We actually made some movement yesterday. So I did go to the ribbon cutting for Ohana, the Montage Youth Mental Health Facility. They are open and willing to give tours to electeds. If you have an opportunity, 60% of their clientele comes from our city. So something to be very aware of in terms of the impact that incredible gift was given to Montage. And then, two last things. Cowboy Christmas, as Councilmember McShane acknowledged, the tree lighting out in front of the rodeo. They were shocked. They expected 250 to 500 people, and there were thousands, I mean, that showed up. And then also, I just want to acknowledge with the council and with the general public that I served as chair of the Monterey County Mayors Association this past year, and I served as chair for my last meeting last week. So tried to serve you and represent the city well. So with that, we do have closed session. We will go, any member of the public wish to comment on California Government Code 54957B1, 54956.9D1, or 54956.9D1?
I'll make this the last time tonight, okay? I promise you.
Okay. I apologize. I'm being told that we're pulling pending litigation, and the only item for closed session is the city manager appointment.
Okay. As I say, I promise you, I'll make this the last time I speak tonight.
Okay.
For that matter, I'll make it. If that's where you're going to be, I'll make it the last time this year. I would like to suggest on this that we terminate the whole process. You've got the best candidate we could get, if he's willing, right up there now. He's been the best city manager, as far as I'm concerned, since Dave Mora. Maybe if I was paying more attention, he'd be better than that. I suggest you give Jim everything he wants, if he's willing to take the job. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, this meeting is adjourned, and we will see you January 9th of next year, 2024.